And on my thirty-ninth birthday, I stopped smoking and that's been it. Hallelujah for me personally, I'll be clear about that.
And that probably had a lot to do with peer pressure and support as well.
No, no, no. It was just purely, I took control over myself. Look, we know there's addictive elements in cigarettes, and people get addicted to that addictive element, whatever it is, the nicotine or whatever we call it. It is an issue, and of course, it ends up in emergency rooms, hospitals, and people die of cancer. I mean, it's ridiculous to smoke. But saying that, we banned it now on the beaches? Have we banned it on the beaches?
The county has, and I believe, I'm not sure the city has control over any public beaches.
Okay. We banned it in our parks?
I don't recall.
The city did, and we did have some jurisdiction over some beaches.
Okay. So, the bottom line is, if you're a smoker, this is another public outdoor location that they can no longer smoke in. What happens if they're walking down the street smoking a cigarette? We gonna get them on that too?
Well, you know, Mr. Rosenthal, the public health strategy is to protect other people from the behavior.
Of course, secondhand smoke, sure, sure.
So, to talk about banning in public areas is to require a discussion about protecting those who don't engage in this habit.
Sure. So what if, if Joe Schmo or Mary Smith go to the farmer's market and they got a cigarette, will we arrest them? Will the cops do something? What will happen to that person if we ban smoking in those farmers?
Well, the wonderful thing is, the city's leadership on another issue of public health is really helpful in understanding the answer to your question. When the city was the first jurisdiction in the world to prohibit AIDS discrimination, I was asked to head that unit, which I continued to head. We never had to take anybody to court to litigation. Why? Because what the city did was a signal to the public at large as to what was and was not appropriate behavior, and workplaces and restaurants began to self-regulate. That seems to be the case with banning smoking. I'm not aware of a single prosecution for anybody smoking on a city bus in quite some time, and we would expect the same self-regulation through peer pressure once the city enacts its ordinance as well.
Admitting his own addiction to nicotine, District Ten Councilmember Herb Wesson says people who smoke have a responsibility to be sensitive to the health of others.
I rise to support this, this action. And I am the one member of the council who is addicted to nicotine. And what I can say to each and every one of you that are here is that in my dealings with the attempts to smoke, that tobacco is the most difficult drug on the planet to kick. It is more difficult than cocaine or crack. It is more difficult than heroin. It is, I agree with you, if we would've known a hundred-plus years ago when, back in Virginia and places like that where they started the tobacco farms, they probably would not have done it. And even though I understand where Bill is coming from, where this is America and individuals should be afforded the right to do what they want, this is not a communist country, I do think individuals like myself need to be sensitive to the health of others. So I have always supported anything that would keep secondhand smoke away from individuals that would not, or act like people, if they see other people smoking, they think it's cool, they think it's okay. Unfortunately for me, I have four sons, or fortunately for me, three of the four have been able to not smoke. I have one that unfortunately followed in his father's footsteps. But there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about quitting. And I can remember once I did quit for almost a year. And then my sons were in a serious car accident, and next thing I know, I was asking a guy to give me Marlboro. So I know how difficult it is. So the people that we can catch in the beginning, I think, when you say there's, you know, the prevention is, is the better way to go, I think this is a good thing. Farmers markets, as Wendy said, are small places, and, and I think that you could go a block or hide in your car and do something like that. I think individuals that do smoke have a responsibility to others.
Believing we should confine smokers and smoking, District Twelve Councilmember Greg Smith, addressing the city attorney, asks about healthcare costs and offers a personal story.
Do you have any idea what the social cost of, the public policy cost is to the American health system to take care of people that are dying from emphysema, lung cancer, and other smoking-related diseases that the public has to pay for in, in the costs that we carry through, social security benefits and other healthcare benefits?
I believe it's in the billions of dollars a year. It is calculated by University of California, San Francisco researchers.
And that's correct. And that's the bottom line here, folks, is the non-smoking public is forced to bear the burden of the smoking public in the cost of healthcare throughout this country. I watched my daughter's father-in-law, mother-in-law pass away last year from lung cancer, constant smoker. I am watching her father-in-law sit in a room, he's now ninety-eight pounds, less than a hundred pounds, has oxygen on, mask all day long, dying from emphysema caused by constant chain smoking. And I see the devastating effects of a chosen disease. This is not a disease you get by accidental contact, although secondhand smoke is an accidental contact, but it's a disease you get because of a choice you made. And then there's the burden that the families bear and society bears. And I'm watching this man die, he has oxygen, he sits there every day with an oxygen mask on and smoking, waiting to die. That is an unfortunate situation that I wish as a country we could resolve. But the way we can resolve it is by passing all the laws we can to restrict it, to get it out of our society as best we can. And we should confine it to the person's home and say, "That's where you can smoke." Any public place where it impacts any other person should be made illegal. And I can't wait to vote for this. I voted for any other smoking measure. I will gladly vote for this one.
Contending that it is our duty to help protect city residents by limiting exposure to secondhand smoke, Councilmember Wendy Gruel says this is a very important position for us to take.
This one, if someone wants to smoke, a farmer's market is a half a block, a block. They can go to the other side of the street. But we ban smoking in restaurants where people are eating and there's food, but we don't, until today, we haven't banned smoking next to people where they're eating food at a farmer's market or they're buying the fresh food. And so I think this is, again, a very important position for us to take. It does seem antithetical that we're giving fresh food and trying to really say, "This is healthy for you," and at the same time allow smoking in those areas. And so, this will be an important step for the city of Los Angeles to protect people who want to go to those farmer's markets when a smoke-free area to purchase healthy food for their families. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
All right, that is approved. We'll send that without objection forthwith.
Again, that vote was to amend the city code to prohibit smoking in city-permitted farmer's markets, and it was unanimous. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel Thirty-Five or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at two-one-three-four-seven-three-three-nine-seven-eight. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at ten a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at ten a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at nine-thirty a.m. and six-thirty p.m., and on Sundays at nine-thirty a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September twelfth, two thousand eight. On behalf of Michael Martin and everyone here at Channel Thirty-Five, I'm Jack Pogue-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Hey, John, lower the gun, buddy. John, leave the gun.
Working as a team.
Go ahead and put the gun down. John, nobody's gonna come at you, all right? But I'd feel a whole lot better if you were to lower that gun.
To protect and to serve.
Why don't you come back here to me, all right? All right, that's good. Walk toward me with your hands up, John.
Put your hand down.
All units, code four to six.
Thanks for working with me.
Two-nine-ten, show me code six, and the article search for the Amber Alert.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
Another positive hit on this bag. We believe at this time that the vehicle is in our custody.
Any available units to respond to the northeast corner, seventh and Broadway, over.
Six K to the fifty right.
Fourteen X eleven, show's responding.
Second two, we're around.
This is it.
Let's go.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Call from the Amber Alert, missing child found and returned to parent, suspect in custody.
LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
L.A. City View, Channel Thirty-Five. Your city, your channel.
All right, here we go. Good morning, Los Angeles. This is the Los Angeles City Council. We're in the John Farrow Council Chambers, meeting the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September nineteenth. Council meets three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. We welcome our guests here in chambers. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel Thirty-Five, or can be viewed by visiting our website, www.lacity.org. Audio of our meetings available on council phone by dialing two-one-three-six-two-one CITY. That's two-one-three-six-two-one-CITY, C-I-T-Y. I'm Councilmember Dennis Pizzi, and I'm joined by council members Cardenas, Perry, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, and Garcetti. Councilmember Gruel's excused, she'll be arriving at eleven a.m. I would like to ask councilmembers Alarcon, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson to please join us in council. If you would like to be heard on items listed on today's agenda or general public comment for items not on the agenda but are under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card, available at the back of the council chambers or at Van Nuys City Hall. I'd like to thank the council members who have arrived on time. We have a few presentations this morning. Council President Garcetti, Council President Garcetti will begin with the first presentation in a few moments. And shortly, we should have a quorum. Again, we're looking for councilmembers Alarcon, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson. We need ten members to have a quorum, and as soon as they are here, we will be able to begin our council meeting. And we have a number of presentations this morning from Council District Thirteen, Four, One, Thirteen, Ten, Fifteen, and Two. We're at seven council members. We need ten to commence our meeting. So if we can have the other council members, Alarcon, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson, please come to the John Farrow Council Chambers so we can begin our council meeting for today, September nineteenth. And waiting in the wings, we're gonna start our presentation with a very special guest this morning, to be introduced by Council President Eric Garcetti. We are going to start our presentation. Councilmember Eric Garcetti, joined by a very distinguished individual, and I will surrender the microphone to Council President Garcetti for our formal presentation of a very welcome guest, a man like me, who graduated Notre Dame High School. Not Marshall High, like Tom Labange always touts, but Notre Dame High School. Council President Garcetti, take it away.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor to be here this morning with everybody, and thank you very much, Mr. Zine, to introduce to all of you somebody who is well-known in America and throughout the world, but perhaps here in his own backyard is not as well-known as a native Angelino. We are very honored to have with us today the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Mike Mullen. Please give him a round of applause and welcome him to the chambers. We were just in the back visiting with a number of city employees and the Chief of Police and the Chief of our Fire Department and others, many employees who served in their double capacities as members of our armed forces, as well as members of our public safety community. We know that they are just the tip of the iceberg here in Los Angeles, where city employees in the hundreds are members of the armed forces, serving in all of the agencies and all of the places in the world that we are currently deployed. It also is, I think, recognition of here in Los Angeles, the way in which the city embraces our men and women that serve this country. But let me tell you a little bit about their boss, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, and I believe you're the first ever from Los Angeles? Is that correct?
I'm...
As far as we know?
As far as I know.
All right. The first Angelino, Admiral Mullen, was sworn in as the seventeenth Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff on October first, two thousand and seven. And he's the Principal Military Advisor to the President, the Secretary of Defense, the National Security Council, and the Homeland Security Council as well. He graduated, as Mr. Zine did, from Notre Dame here in the San Fernando Valley. Mrs. Mullen is also a native of the San Fernando Valley and a graduate of Westlake School for Girls, which no longer exists, as we were talking about, but still is a great place. And he then left here, the San Fernando Valley, to go to the Naval Academy in nineteen sixty-eight. When we were chatting upstairs, I learned a little bit of his family story. His father was a publicist in the movie industry, and his credited, Mr. Smith will like this, you know, the Beef Bowl that's done with Lowry's, that was his father's innovation, something that still, both teams of the members of the Rose Bowl come and do, and whoever out-eats the other one is supposed to be the winner. But Mike Mullen is clearly cut from a cloth of a great family and a great country. In his career, he commanded three ships, the gasoline tanker USS Knoxabee, the guided missile destroyer USS Goldsboro, and the guided missile cruiser USS Yorktown. As a flag officer, he commanded the Cruiser Destroyer Group Two, the George Washington Battle Group, and the U.S. Second Fleet, NATO Striking Fleet, Atlantic. And assured, he's served in many leadership capacities as well, the Naval Academy and the Navy's Bureau of Personnel, in the office of the Secretary of Defense and on the Navy staff. He was the thirty-second Vice Chief of Naval Operations from August two thousand and three to October two thousand and four, and his last operational assignment was as Commander of NATO Joint Force Command, Naples, and Commander, U.S. Naval Forces Europe. His degrees come from Harvard and also from the Naval Postgraduate School after the academy. And prior to becoming Chairman, he served as the twenty-eighth, well, concurrently serves as the twentieth Chief of Naval Operations. I want to say something, though, about the man that we saw behind chambers here. The warmth with which he and his wife clearly lived their lives, the commitment to faith, to community, and to country is something that should inspire all of us. One of the things we talked about was at a time when we have perhaps fewer people serving the country than should, the movement towards service and the movement towards each of us giving back in our own way, whether it's through military service or community service, is clearly growing in this country. And I think it's because of men like Mike Mullen that we see what a life of service can and does produce here. Before we hear from him, I'd like to acknowledge a few of the brave men and women who are here with us today, who are wearing uniforms of their services, but each and every day wear the uniforms of their city or public safety employment here in the city of Los Angeles. First, I'd like to introduce Christina Aguilera, from the United States Army, from Councilmember Cardenas's office. Jim West, who serves the United States Army and is LAPD. John Russo of the United States Coast Guard, LAPD. Rafael Santos, United States Navy, LAPD. Dave Sigler, Army National Guard and LAPD. Tim Stack, the United States Air Force, LAPD. A man who I report to in my own unit down in Coronado, John Zambri, United States Navy, I'll get my second bar next summer, but we're waiting until then. Evan Givara, United States Marine Corps, LAPD. And Steve Emrick, Army National Guard and LAPD as well. Let's all give them a round of applause collectively. So it gives me great joy to introduce and to present to you for a few words as well, our own L.A.'s finest, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Admiral Mike Mullen.
Well, I assure you, growing up in the San Fernando Valley as a kid, I never thought I'd be standing here. Very special place, and to Council President Garcetti, to the council members, and to all of you who mean so much to this vital city and are dedicated to its, to a better future here for not the city itself, but really the people who make it up. I'm honored, humbled to be here with you today with my wife, Deborah, who we met actually living on the East Coast. It was one of, one of those situations where our mothers who were here went to a reception, and gee, I have a daughter living in Washington, I have a son at Annapolis. As mothers are wont to do, and, and some forty years later, it's still very, very strong, and I could not be here without her support. She's raised two sons while I was gone a lot, and, believe me, we're partners in this, and so it's special for both of us to be here. To those of you who are, who are serving, who are here in, in the military and in the police and the Fire Department and throughout the city, I also want to say thanks. Thanks to you, thanks to your families who support you in this. A couple of you I talked to recognize the challenges that, that we have, and one of you just back from Iraq in a National Guard unit very recently, and you represent the best of America, the best of, of Los Angeles, and it's a real privilege to be here with you. And again, not unlike me, you wouldn't be out here with tremendous support from your families, and I can't say enough how much we appreciate what you do and your service to our nation. Thank you. I won't, I won't go on for long, except to say, this is a vital hub of our country, and some three-hundred-and-fifty thousand young men and women in the Los Angeles vicinity serve, either active or reserve, in our military, and their families are equally supportive. So it is, it is not often thought of as a military town, but when you consider that number, it really in many ways is. And we are incredibly dependent on them, on support for them as they serve. I had the privilege the other day, Friday morning actually, of speaking in New York at a conference called Service Nation. And I was taken back by the, the spirit of service that was there. I spoke to those who are my age, as what I call a leading-edge baby boomer, and those who are actually my age, who are retiring in our country and have a wealth of talent that can also help us in these very challenging times, across the full spectrum of service. I was also very moved by the twenty-two-year-olds and twenty-three-year-olds who were there, serving in capacities across many, many institutions, both nationally and internationally. And they also are very similar to those young people who serve in the military these days, who have a spirit and a patriotism and a dedication and understanding to do something for, for something beyond themselves and to make a difference. So I'm very encouraged by that. Mr. Garcetti talked about this spirit of service here, and I think it is clearly a wonderful aspect of what we're discussing now across the nation, and certainly I've been, not just across this nation, but around the world, and we live in a time where that's very much needed. You honor us today being here. It is very special to come back to, to Los Angeles and to see friends and to meet people. In fact, Dennis and I, my brother and Dennis, were high school classmates at Notre Dame, and pretty quickly reunite with people that you have not seen or known of for an awful long time. And indeed, I go here to spend a couple hours at Notre Dame High School with the student body there, and they are, they are to me what our future is about, investing in our young people, investing in a way where their future is assured, here, across our country, and in fact, in many ways around the world. So it's a special treat to be here. I look forward to spending a few days here over the weekend with, with both family and friends, as well as individuals who are making a difference in ROTC and recruiting and in, in the military. I, believe me, as I indicated, I had no plans to be here. When I left here at the age of 17 and went to Annapolis, it was the other side of the world. It isn't now, but back in the 60s, you just didn't get on an airplane and fly across country very often. And the underpinnings that I had here from my family and from my community served me, have served me to this day, and their underpinnings I'll absolutely never forget. So thanks for all you do, thanks for supporting the 2.2 million young men, men and women who serve. I would ask you to pay attention to those families whose military members have been wounded, the families of the fallen, whose lives have changed forever. They still have the American dream. They want to own a piece of the rock, they want to have jobs, they want to raise their kids in security, they want to go to, they want their kids to have an education, they want an education. The way they get, the way they achieve their dream may be a little different because they're injured, and their lives have been certainly redirected temporarily, but they are inspirational young people, and in particular as well, and, and the only way I know how to take care of them is to have the Department of Defense, the Department of Veterans Affairs, and really communities throughout the land, reach to them to make sure that their sacrifices are recognized and they're in good shape for the rest of their lives. So please keep them in mind as you go about your business. They are wonderful young people who have done what we've asked them to do as a country, not blinked an eye about it and just moved on and made a huge difference. So again, thanks, thanks for your support, thanks to, it's great to meet the firefighters, the police, and those who serve with the same kind of spirit that our military does, both in our country and around the world. Please, I know you take good care of them, recognize them, they really do make a difference. Thanks.
We have a Councilmember, Bill Rosendahl. Councilmember Rosendahl, then followed by Councilmember Labonge.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm wearing my hat to show you that Post 283 in the Pacific Palisades just donated $2,150,000 to create a Fisher House on our VA property. There'll be 21 suites for families to visit their loved ones who will be treated in the VA property in the western part of our city here, which, which is taking a deep interest in it. Also, I want you to know that a group called New Directions have opened up in Delray, a section of our city, with the support of the community, a transition home, a home for Iraqi and Afghan vets in a transition sense. They've also opened up, thanks to Bobby Shriver, Bobby Shriver's a Councilmember in the city of Santa Monica in the most recent days, with the support of Senator Feinstein, another vacant building on that VA property for homeless vets. We have a huge homeless vet problem here, and frankly, Mr. Secretary, we need your leadership with our VA property so we can do more for homeless vets. But I salute you for, for your leadership and for your support of our Iraqi and Afghan vets. As you know, 1.7 million have gone through that war, and many of them have issues, and our government has not given the veterans the support they should get. But you and I had a conversation about that, and I know you're sensitive to it, and I look forward to your leadership on the veterans coming home from the present wars, and thank you for coming to us today.
Councilmember Labonge.
Good morning, Admiral. I apologize for not being able to make the reception due to district business, but I was listening to your wonderful story, and when you were talking about how you met your wife, I thought maybe you met her at Bob's on Van Nuys, you know, being a Valley boy and doing that.
Or June Ellen's on Van Nuys Boulevard.
Right, so, but I, I just want to thank you and every member of the Services. When I was 24, I was in Berlin, and I met Berliners who thanked me for the occupied forces who helped stabilize Berlin in that period of time after World War II, and then really was the beacon of the West, which ultimately caused the fall of, of what was our long and hard Cold War, but through democracy and information and freedom. So thank to all those who served, and to our city employees who serve throughout, and those who served in the past. And I just was reading in this last weekend's USA Today magazine that there's very few World War II veterans left. So this year, I think seeing you here and seeing that story, we should try to pump something up in Los Angeles for recognizing those on this Veterans Day coming up. And Mr. Rosendahl, thank you, and Mr. Smith, I believe are the only veterans on this Council here. In 1972, I did take a pre-induction physical, but President Nixon then entered the draft at the time of that particular period of time. But I will say, those who serve our Armed Forces are outstanding people who just, as you said, see the mission and try to do it. We just hope you always do the right mission. I hope you always get the right impact that takes, because the United States needs great friends around the world, and that's, you're our ambassadors in so many ways, as well as the State Department. And Mr. Garcetti, thank you for being a reservist now. It's so important that you spend the extra time away from your family in the naval service. So to all, congratulations, thank you, and thanks for being here. Thank you.
Let me add that our General Manager of Rexon Parts, Mr. McCrory, was shaken when you mentioned military personnel, former member of the United States Navy, General Manager, John McCrory. Wave your hand, John, to the Admiral. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I want to join my colleagues and let you know that I really enjoy your passion about talking about the veterans returning. As a veteran of the United States Air Force, the other service, I have a true place in my heart for veterans, and recently, we wanted to build at the VA Hospital, which is in my district, the other one, the VA Sepulveda, we wanted to build a homeless center for veterans, and homeless centers are not easy to build anywhere. People don't want them in their neighborhoods. When we had a joint meeting in the public to talk about bringing veterans into the, to the hospital and creating a center for homeless veterans, the community overwhelmingly said, "We want this, let's do it because we support our military." And so I'm very proud of our community, very proud to host the other big VA hospital in LA, and I thank very much for your service and on behalf, and I, you know I talked to you earlier about this, as a father of a serviceman in the United States Navy, we're very proud of what you've done in the Navy, and he tells me the Navy is very well-run. He loves being a sailor in your service, and I'm very proud of him, as I am of all you, and particularly Deborah, I had a great chance to talk to you about the meaning of service, and I think nothing is greater in the meaning of service than the United States Military. When my son enlisted, he was a graduate of USC, he was working in the film industry, on the movie, on the TV show The Sopranos. He gave up a very good lucrative job to enlist in the Navy, because after 9/11, he said, "I have to do something for my country," and at 29-years-old, he just gave up his entire career to go in the military. So I'm very proud of him, but it says something about the military. It says that this is a thing that people do because they believe in this country, and they believe in what they're doing is the right thing to do for their country. And so bless all of you, our servicemen and women, who are city employees, who give up their time to continue service, and thank you, Admiral, for being the leader of our service, Armed Forces, and particularly the United States Navy. And I hope you don't mind, but I frequently call our colleague over there, Eric Garcetti, Admiral Garcetti, and I hope you don't mind that, but it's affectionately used, and maybe one of these days, he'll be Admiral Garcetti, I don't know. But anyway, God bless you, and thank you for leading our troops.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, Councilmember Garcetti, our Council President in the United States Naval Reserve, very, very involved in that activity, he had an opportunity to permit me to go aboard the USS Dennis for a day and a night and a day, what an experience. And to speak with the personnel on that ship, the young folks on that ship, men and women, the United States Navy, the Marine Corps personnel, to land on a cod, to be launched, unbelievable, but the dedication to the American people, the young folks in the United States Military, absolutely stellar with their attitude, with their camaraderie, with all of the aspects, and the captain of that ship, commanding that aircraft carrier, just what a wonderful experience. So you've got a tremendous amount of support from the rank and file of the military, as well as elected officials in the American public to keep our freedom as we have it, and sometimes we take for granted, but to have you here in Council Chambers is absolutely an honor. So I just want to offer my congratulations to, to you, and what a wonderful career, starting in the Valley at Notre Dame High and Annapolis, and now the Commander in Chief, the, not the Commander in Chief, the Chairman, the Chairman, Joint Chiefs of Staff. So congratulations to you, Admiral.
Actually, the only other thing my mother would want me to say, I went to St. Charles Grade School before I went to Notre Dame High School.
Very good. Mr. Garcetti.
But thank you.
Let me, on behalf of the entire city then, and the mayor as well, present to our very own Angelino, Mike Mullen, this resolution on behalf of your city. We know that this is the home from which you came, will always be your home, and whenever you come back, we hope that you will remember the love that is here for you in this city, and when you're not here, this will serve to remind you of Los Angeles and the greatness which you have brought to our city through all the work that you do. So congratulations, and on behalf of the city, we'd like to present this to you. And if I could ask all the Councilmembers, why don't we take a picture here?
Photo at the table?
Yeah.
All Councilmembers, take a brief intermission photo at the table. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on with our presentations as we wish the Admiral safe journey in our beautiful City of the Angels. Our next presentation will be from Council District Number 14 and District Number 1, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labonge. So our next presentation, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labonge. Let's hear it for the Admiral as he leaves the Council Chambers. Admiral Mullen, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Armstrong, you too, thank you. All right, Mr. Labonge, you and Mr. Reyes are next up. For our group of presentations as they continue. You have it, Tom.
I'm with Nicole Whitman, the great Director of the Jackie Robinson Foundation, Dan Guerrero, the great Athletic Director of UCLA, and also Duke Russell, the great graduate of Hollywood High School, Los Angeles City College, and also a member of the Dodgers farm team, joined by Ed Reyes, who is very happy to see the success of the Dodgers here in this season, and Bernard Parks. We are here to commemorate and recognize Jackie Robinson and Jackie Robinson Day, which every year annually, Major League Baseball does recognize as an important day. Jackie Robinson, who grew up at Pasadena, went to Mira High School, went to PCC, and then went to the great University of California at Los Angeles, UCLA, where from there, he went on into the Dodger organization, played for Montreal, then was selected to be the first African-American to play in Major League Baseball and break the color line. What's so important about athletics and art and music and dance, it does have a way to make people understand, love, and be with people. And I know how, in reading about Jackie Robinson, how difficult the time it was. This resolution salutes the man and his great contributions. It's signed by all of us here, there, in this city council, including our mayor, and when we conclude our remarks, we will call for the resolution to be adopted. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Tom, for stimulating this great occasion. For me, Jackie Robinson Day is really a day reminders. It's a day of recognized individual who did go through an incredible amount of pressure to change how our society actually functions today. He's the first individual to break that color line and actually develop the type of rapport in which he continued after winning amazing awards, national recognition for his athletic abilities, continued in the civil rights movement, and did extremely, extremely effective work in changing how this country works and deals with people, getting beyond the color line, and actually creating an environment that is much healthier for us. So it's a great honor to be here. I want to thank Duke Russell for his tenacity. I know this is something that's very dear to him. I'd like to thank Nicole Whitman for her participation and joining us today, and I'm very honored as a UCLA Bruin that Danny Guerrero's here, Athletic Director, 103 championships, the first university in the country to have over 100 championships in one university. So UCLA is the school of champions, and I thank Dan for his hard work. And I just want to say that although our attendance of African-Americans at UCLA has been low, we see that with our new Chancellor, Chancellor Block, policies are changing, there's a whole different culture emerging in the Latino community, we've seen some of the numbers rise.
their own players, were rotten individuals, and not understanding the beauty of people as this transpired over that time. But Jackie Robinson Day is important because there's the Jackie Robinson Foundation. And to speak right now, Nicole Whitman, who's the Associate Vice President of the Jackie Robinson Foundation, will give some remarks.
Good morning. As a former Jackie Robinson scholar myself, I'm very honored to be here today to accept this honor on Jackie Robinson Day. I'm here today representing the Robinson family and the Jackie Robinson Foundation. And it's particularly special as we are celebrating our 35th anniversary year, where we now have 280 Jackie Robinson scholars across the country. We just entered 83 freshmen, our largest class ever in the history of the 35 years that we've been doing this. We've basically been providing four-year college scholarships to minority students who have particular financial need, but also expose themselves to leadership opportunities and mentorship opportunities, and have really demonstrated community service potential. For the past 10 years or so, we've been going through a lot of change at the foundation, and particularly four years ago, we opened up this Los Angeles office, and I'm particularly excited to be running this office and increasing the number of scholarships and assistance that we can provide to students within this particular Southern California area. I really do want to today thank our councilmen for presenting this award to us, and definitely want to really insist and sort of impose upon everyone here in Los Angeles to really help the Jackie Robinson Foundation continue our mission and making sure that education is its top priority as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Nicole, thank you. Duke Russell, who's the community spark plug in this.
Good morning, everybody. President Garcetti is not here, but to the rest of the members, I want to thank all of you for continuing Jackie Robinson Day. Obviously, you know how important it is. I want to thank Mayor Hahn for starting it in 2002. I have a magazine here that my daughter sent to me last year. She's an elementary school teacher, and it's just the greatest magazine I've ever seen as far as giving the history of Jackie Robinson. I put copies of the front page and the back page on all of your desks, and I hope you get the word out to your constituents to get a back copy of this. It's very, very important that we get more publicity every year. John Young could not come today, his flight got delayed. He's the founder of RVI, a wonderful man, and of course, we miss him. We also miss Ray Bartlett, who is Jackie's best friend and teammate at Pasadena City College and UCLA. Passed away a few months ago, but he was a major help in getting Jackie Robinson Day started. Thanks again very much.
Thank you very much. And now, Dan Guerrero, Athletic Director, UCLA.
Thank you very much. You know, I feel a unique kinship to Jackie Robinson, having had the opportunity to play baseball at UCLA, as Jackie did. He was the first student athlete in the history of UCLA to, in fact, letter in four sports, baseball, basketball, football, and track and field. And if you walk through the Athletic Hall of Fame today at UCLA, you'll see images, various depictions of Jackie, really a lot of information that depict the achievements of this great man. And certainly, when you walk through the university, just in a general sense, his spirit of excellence permeates the entire place, even though it's been over 60 years since he last was on the UCLA campus. I think it's been recognized already that his profound impact in history, apart from sports, is of course clearly evident. I, for one, can assure you with the highest degree of confidence that the folks at UCLA and people all across the world will remember Jackie for his selflessness, for his courage. He was the kind of individual that talked about those individuals that helped him get to where he was, and he felt that it was important, imperative, for all of us to help others along their life's journey as well. It wasn't something he just said, it was something that he embodied. So certainly, on behalf of Chancellor Gene Block at UCLA and Jackie's UCLA family, we're very proud to be here and to represent him, to have the opportunity to say a few words here before the council, and to always remember the great man that he was, a man that has a legacy in American history. Thank you.
Dan, thank you very much. And Mr. President, now, therefore...
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Alacant, Mr. Alacant? On the speaker key.
I mentioned this story, I think, last year, but when I was 10 years old, my family took a vacation to San Francisco, and there was a massive civil rights demonstration, and leading the demonstration was Jackie Robinson. And I distinctly remember it. We were just there on vacation, but in 1963, it set the tone to be very impressionable on my life, because baseball was probably the most important thing to me at 10 years old. And I distinctly remember him speaking from the balcony of some building, I don't remember what the building was, in San Francisco, and it was, what impressed me the most was that I was, of course, even at 10 years old, knew of the incredible marks that he had made in baseball. But to see him use that to help others to gain their civil rights, I think, was more impressionable than anything I knew about him in baseball. So I again applaud his legacy and encourage all athletes to be mindful of the fact that they are extension of the community, and there's so many ways that professional athletes can contribute to their community and make an impact on young people's lives, so that we can create a better world as time goes on. Finally, I had the opportunity to golf with Jack, with, I'm sorry, the other Robinson, Frank Robinson, last Monday, and it was a very special 18 holes, to be with the man who broke the color barrier as the manager of, in Major League Baseball, on both the American League and the National League. And he's just a very nice guy, and I'm sure as Jackie was. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you, Tom, for recognizing them again.
And it is special for someone who grew up in Southern California, in Pasadena, someone who came through this city, someone who went to a great university, and a four-sport letterman. And there's no four-sport letterman in high school anymore, unfortunately, which is so special. Jackie Robinson is truly a very special person. In his memory, we say that about adoption of this resolution, the mayor and the City Council of Los Angeles hereby honor Jackie Robinson for his legendary stand for all people of color who have come before and after him, and for the pursuit of equality in sports, in larger society, and the immense talents and grace which he did. And this is Jackie Robinson Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Smile, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes. Our next presentation will be from Council District One, Mr. Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to welcome Evelyn Espinosa to the council chambers. I welcome Cesar Calderon and administrators of SEA Girls Academy in Westlake. We are recognizing Evelyn for her determination and tenacity. At eight years old, Evelyn sold bubble gum and other candy door-to-door in her community of Pico Union. At the sixth grade, her mom was buying the enterprising 12-year-old at a wholesale mark to resell at school, they were buying toys. Now, at 17 years old, Evelyn's competing nationally with other talented youth. She has her own line of candles called Hippie Candles. For this last venture, she was named the winner of the Los Angeles Regional Business Plan Competition, sponsored by Merrill Lynch. She won a $1,075 prize, and will be competing next month for a $10,000 prize. More than money, she is learning the skills to become a great businesswoman and a leader in the community. She will become a role model for other young women in Pico Union, Westlake, and throughout the nation. Now, to me, this is special, a few years back, we went to this, it's a building right next to Westlake-McCarta Park, across the street, and it's in the corner, and you see all these young ladies, young ladies who are looking at alternative ways of getting their education. They want to see how they can get back on track to participate in society. Many of them come from backgrounds in which they struggle, and there are many challenges that they face in not being in a traditional school. But to see Evelyn emerge from this environment, and to actually be in a place where she's winning national awards, and as you know, Pico Union is one of those areas, we have over 70,000 people per square mile. We are just beginning to put in the high schools in needs, we are just getting our McCarta Park back in the past few years, but it's an environment that's very, very tough. Our dropout rates are very high, gang culture is very strong, and to have Evelyn achieve this, I found was important to share with the council, because we are doing something right when we're able to see the great support and say that the administrators, the teachers, the counselors, they're very proud of her. I see her as a role model, not to put any more pressure on her, but I think it's just fabulous that we can share this type of story, and I want to make sure all of Los Angeles knew of these successes. Too many times, we hear the negative, but there's one great shining star that's emerging from these types of environments. Evelyn, come on up. Congratulations. This is for you, Evelyn, on winning the Merrill Lynch NFT Greater Los Angeles Regional Youth Business Plan Competition. Your inspirational spirit is to be commended. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I believe she has a few words for us.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President, council members, and everyone else in the crowd. First off and foremost, I would like to thank God for shedding light upon the right path and placing me on it. I would also like to thank my parents for showing me enormous amounts of love and support which have allowed me to generate the strength needed to succeed. Also, Mrs. Seki, I have learned a great deal from you, not to mention how to strive in the business world. Alina, she's not present, she's my mentor, my friend. She is an angel, I cannot say that enough. It is because of her that I still believe owning my own business and working while other adolescents are out partying is still so cool. My other mentor, Jason, is not present, but still. It's because of him that I've learned to believe in myself, and it's because of him that I know that I'm winning in New York. Last but not least, teachers and staff from SEA Charter High School, and as well as family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Evelyn, and I want to thank and congratulate your mom, thank you for joining us and sharing this time with us. Thank you so much. Scott, would you just share a few words?
First, I'd like to thank Council Member Ed Reyes for acknowledging Evelyn and for his leadership in opening the doors of his office and the doors of City Hall to people that would otherwise be neglected. So one thing I want to say is that let's have faith in our youth. Let's invest in our youth, because Evelyn is one of the examples of what's happening in our schools. There's also good things happening at SEA. We have kids that have won spelling bee contests regional-wise. Now we have another winner, and there's many winners. We have over 200 students graduating who would otherwise have been lost in the streets before coming to SEA. So there is hope, and let's support and invest in our youth. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but my name is Judy Seki, I'm the teacher of Evelyn Espinosa, and I just want to congratulate her, because it's through her effort and hard work and cooperation and sincere desire to succeed that's brought her here today. And I'm confident that she is going to New York, she is going to win the $10,000 first prize, and I think you'll see a lot more of the hippies' candles. Thank you very much.
So if you see a hippie candle out there, you know who put it together, you know who you're supporting, congratulations, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations. Our next presentation will be by Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Nice to see you.
Good to see you again. This is Derek Gladwin, this is our new president-elect. Our House ranking national, he's a trustee, and then our state president, there's somebody as well, Monty Merkin, he's going to be our incoming president.
Mr. Garcetti shaking.
Each year, we try to raise awareness about one of the most important things that hits even closer to home right now, as the city's financial crises royal some of the stability of our families and our communities, but the importance of having life insurance. And this month, like each month, this time of year, is Life Insurance Awareness Month. Nearly 70 million adult Americans do not have enough life insurance coverage needed to ensure a secure financial future for their loved ones. As we know, insurance provides us financial security for families in the event of a premature death by helping surviving family members to meet immediate and long-term financial obligations and objectives. Recent studies have shown that when a premature death occurs, insufficient life insurance coverage results in three-fourths, three-fourths of surviving family having to take measures such as working additional jobs or longer hours, borrowing money, withdrawing money from savings and aid investment accounts, and in many cases, moving to lesser housing.
So, one thing I want to say is that let's have faith in our youth. Let's invest in our youth because Evelyn is one of the examples of what's happening in our schools. There's also good things happening at SEA. We have kids that have won spelling bee contest regional-wise. Now we have another winner, and there's many winners. We have over 200 students graduating who would otherwise have been lost in the streets before coming to SEA. So, there is hope, and let's support and invest in our youth. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but my name is Judy Seki, I'm the teacher of Evelyn Espinoza, and I just want to congratulate her because it's through her effort and hard work and cooperation and sincere desire to succeed that's brought her here today. And I'm confident that she is going to New York, she is going to win the $10,000 first prize, and I think you'll see a lot more of the hippies candles. Thank you very much.
So, if you see a hippie candle out there, you know who put it together, you know who you're supporting, congratulations, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations. Our next presentation will be by Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Nice to see you. Good to see you again. This is Derek Butler, this is our new president. Our highest ranking national, he's a trustee, and then our state president, there's some as well, Monty Merton, he's going to be our incoming president. Mr. Garcetti shaking.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Each year, we try to raise awareness about one of the most important things that hits even closer to home right now as the city's financial crises royal some of the stability of our families and our communities, but the importance of having life insurance. And this month, like each month, this time of year, is Life Insurance Awareness Month. Nearly 70 million adult Americans do not have enough life insurance coverage needed to ensure a secure financial future for their loved ones. As we know, insurance provides us financial security for families in the event of a premature death by helping surviving family members to meet immediate and long-term financial obligations and objectives. Recent studies have shown that when a premature death occurs, insufficient life insurance coverage results in three-fourths, three-fourths of surviving family having to take measures such as working additional jobs or longer hours, borrowing money, withdrawing money from savings and aid investment accounts, and in many cases, moving to lesser housing. It hits families squarely. The City of Los Angeles is proud to have National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors as one of its distinguished organizations in our communities, and the men behind me represent the very best of that industry, folks who care for community and family, who care for the individuals that make up Los Angeles, the state, and the United States of America, and meet our needs in improving the financial services that we have. The goal of Life Insurance Awareness Month is to make consumers more aware of their life insurance needs and encourage them to seek professional advice. There are the right individuals out there, such as these gentlemen here, and they can give you the information that you need. And as Tom LeBons often says, information is knowledge, knowledge is power. And with that, you can empower yourself by having the right information to make the decisions that you need. So today, we declare this month, September 2007, as Life Insurance Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to take the necessary steps to ensure the financial security of their loved ones. And it gives me a great pleasure to reintroduce a familiar face around here, Gilbert Morris, who has done so much on this issue and with Lions Club as well, and to present all these gentlemen with Life Insurance Awareness Month Resolution from the City of Los Angeles. So I'd like to give this to Gilbert, and I'd like to ask him to say a few words as well.
First off, I'd like to thank the President of LA City Council, Eric Garcetti, for the third year in a row that we've had this opportunity and recognition on the importance of the role that we play in this community, especially in this financial turbulent time and being the fact that this organization has been around since 1891 in the City of Los Angeles. It's well-established. Now, what I'm going to do real fast here is I'd like to introduce our high-ranking individuals for NAFA. We have Russ Smith. We'd like to introduce the rest of our distinguished group. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Russell Smith, and I'm the trustee on the National Board for the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. There just simply is no doubt that life insurance is a fundamental building block in creating financial independence for families, and it's people like the ones behind me that provide that service. So it's with great admiration and respect that I not only thank you, but I congratulate you on proclaiming September as Life Insurance Awareness Month. Thank you for that, and I will introduce our immediate past president of our California Association, Dennis Sunderman.
Thank you, Russell. Good morning and thank you. Let me express what an honor it is to be here today. We certainly are appreciative. The question is, what exactly is Life Insurance Awareness Month? It's an educational campaign designed to get consumers to take stock of their life insurance needs, to protect their loved ones with proper life insurance. It's absolutely imperative that we educate consumers so that they can understand how they can protect their family from the financial devastation that occurs with a premature death. We know that about three in 10 Americans have no life insurance whatsoever, so it's critically important that we get the message out. Maybe they don't know an agent, maybe they think it's too expensive, so how do we find out about life insurance and how to protect your family? Why don't you Google Life Insurance Awareness Month this month, and you can get all of the information that you need. This proclamation puts you in very, very good company, we're certainly grateful for that. The Senate and House of Representatives of the United States Government have proclaimed, along with 16 governors around the United States, that this is Life Insurance Awareness Month, and that's critically important because we want to show families how they can provide the money that they need to help a family pay for living expenses in the event that there's a premature death. It helps a spouse to stay at home, to help raise the children, guarantee the money for an education or to buy a house, and how to avoid financial and emotional devastation without life insurance. Just a couple of our past national spokespeople would be Scott Hamilton, Olympic skater, Molly Shannon from Saturday Night Live, and this year's national spokesman is Donnie Wahlberg, TV and movie star. We're grateful for this opportunity to be here today and this wonderful proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Mr. President, council members. My name is Derek Butler, I'm the incoming president of NAFA Los Angeles, and I just wanted to thank you for your continued support in this third annual proclamation and this important initiative. Thank you. On behalf of my board members that have joined me here, NAFA Los Angeles, and the 250 members, we thank you again. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you for the insurance industry. Thank you very, very much. Our next presentation will be Councilmember, you ready, Herb? Councilmember Herb Weston? You ready? All right, Councilmember Herb Weston. Adopt a pet. Councilmember Weston, and he's going to have some little creature to show to our audience.
Thank you, Mr. President and members, and we have here today is Carrie, right? And what is your name?
My name is Arlene.
So this is, this is Arlene, who does not need to be adopted, but Carrie definitely needs to be adopted. This is one of my favorite days, it's Pet Adoption Friday. Carrie is a mixed Chihuahua terrier and a whole bunch of things. She's a little over one-year-old. She's a great dog, she's been very patient today, if you're, very patient, and if you're looking for unconditional love from a companion, this is a perfect companion. I say again to, and I say this every week that we do this, to all of our city family that we have a 100% adoption rate, and you know, Carrie's here excited because she believes that before this day is over, that she will have a home as well. If those of you that are watching this on Channel 5 are interested in Carrie, or if you're upstairs in your office and you're interested in Carrie, please call 888-452-7381. I will repeat that, 888-452-7381. And I want to lift her so you can see, she's just a, she's just a little bitty, just a little bitty something, won't take a lot of food, so, and she's, like I said, looking for a home, so please, what we're going to do, we're going to keep Carrie with us a little longer, so if you're interested, either call or come right downstairs to the back of the council chambers. Again, this is Carrie, she's ready, she's ready to go, right? She has her shots and...
She has her shots, she does need to be spayed.
Oh, she does need to be spayed, which we will make arrangements to take care of that. But this is Carrie, looking for a home. Carrie, let's get one more photo. Let's get a photo.
Look at the camera, there you go. All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Weston. Again, that number is 888-452-7381 to adopt that cute little dog. Our next presentation, Council District 15, Janice Hahn. Councilmember Hahn for a presentation.
Colleagues, today, we're honoring Euston Terminals at the Port of Los Angeles, and you know, you've heard me all the time, anytime I get an opportunity before this body, I talk about how we can be more responsible at the Port of Los Angeles, how we can keep it as an economic engine, how we can have good jobs, but you know what? We can have clean air too, and we don't have to always pit one against the other. And so, really, it is with a lot of pleasure today that we're honoring Euston Terminals for being a very good steward of that economic engine and making sure that we also have clean air. Euston has been at the Port of Los Angeles since 1991 and has grown to represent 18% of the total annual containers in and out of our port complex. There's no doubt that they have been a huge contributor to this economic engine, to the health of this economic engine. But I have respect for Euston Terminals, almost unlike I have respect for any other of the tenants at the Port of Los Angeles, and that's because they have always been a leader. They have always been out front when it comes to environmental solutions and being a responsible neighbor to our harbor area communities of Wilmington and San Pedro. Euston was the first terminal to utilize clean burning LNG yard equipment and the first to voluntarily bring in a ship that we can plug into the alternative maritime power at birth. These efforts not only help cleaning the air for those of us who breathe the air, and remember, I talked last week about how the ships coming into the port complex contribute 20% of all the air pollution to the LA region, not just the harbor area, but the whole LA region. So this not only benefits the people who breathe the air around the harbor, it benefits all of us who breathe this air. But the yard equipment, and this is not like backyard equipment, yard equipment is a terminology for all that equipment that is out there on the docks that helps pick up those containers and unload those containers and move those containers around. It's all the equipment needed as part of the goods movement industry. So this also helps the men and women who work on the docks, and I will tell you, sometimes they're kind of a forgotten entity in this whole formula. And you know, we have about 5,000 men and women that work on the docks in Long Beach and Los Angeles on a daily basis. My son, Danny, is actually one of the casual longshoremen. He's one of those day laborers who every day goes to the hiring hall and gets leftover jobs that are not given away to the regular employees out there. And he will tell me, Mom, I can tell a big difference, a big difference, when I work on the terminals at Euston. He tells me about the dirt and the grit on his arms and that he breathes in his nose. When he's at this terminal, he says he loves getting a job here. It makes such a difference to the air he breathes and how he feels at the end of an eight-hour shift. And I know that's true for all the men and women who work on these docks on a daily basis. This goes a long way to respecting the workers who work out there in this goods movement industry. Today, we're recognizing Euston Terminals for achieving a special certification from the International Standards Organization called ISO 14001, 14,001. The ISO sets international environmental standards. No other terminal operator at the Port of Los Angeles or Long Beach has achieved this standard. Euston achieved this recognition by implementing sustainable practices at their terminals. They have embraced new technology that reduces air emissions, like the LNG yard equipment, like amping of our ships, and they have implemented recycling and environmental training for all their employees. Euston has truly set an example for all of our terminal operators, and I have challenged each of them to follow the example of Euston Terminals and be out there front innovating this new technology that we know exists today that can make a dramatic difference in the air that we breathe. Euston is really setting the pace for terminal operations at the Port of Los Angeles. I appreciate you, I respect the work you do, that's why I wanted to bring you down here in front of everybody and honor you for the work that you've done. I want you to keep leading the way, keep pushing the envelope on cleaning our air, and I'm very, very honored to present this certificate to you today. We have here today, from Euston, Mr. Yoshio Watanabe, the chief executive officer. We have Mr. Joe Nomasa, the general manager, Mrs. Linda Frame, the senior manager, quality assurance. We have former councilmember Rudy Savornich here, who has represented this company on a number of occasions, and from the port, we have Ralph Appi and Catherine McDermott. So to the chief executive officer for Euston, Mr. Watanabe, I would like to present you, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, this recognition of the great work you have done being a leader in environmental solutions. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say something? And we'll take a picture afterwards.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. On behalf of the company, Euston Terminals, and its parent company, NYK Line, I'd like to thank you very much for this wonderful resolution which recognized our achievement. We are very proud of being your partner in doing business in the Port of Los Angeles with some innovative green solutions. And taking this opportunity, I have brought with me a company report which highlights our achievements so far in protecting local and global environment. And thank you again for this honor, and we are very much, I'd like to express that we are very much determined to make further progress in establishing a more environmentally friendly society. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thank you very much. Why don't we come over here and take a picture? Okay, good. I'll come over here.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our final presentation will be Councilmember Gruel.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and sorry for my casual attire today in jeans, but I was on horseback this morning at my district with a new trail that we were able to cut the ribbon for this morning. So I am so pleased today to, and have really great pride to welcome the 2008 Latino Artbeat winners to the Los Angeles City Council. These students have worked very hard and have created some amazing pieces of art. Latino Artbeat is a national organization with a focus on youth at risk and enabling young aspiring artists and contestants an opportunity for public recognition for their artistic talents and encouragement not only to stay in high school, but to graduate high school. We are joined today by Don Rossi, Nuccio, and Brandon Lopez from Latino Artbeat. By the award of scholarships to these winners, the Latino Artbeat also affords the students opportunities at higher education, which they might not have otherwise had. Latino Artbeat has provided membership to many thousands of young people, mentorship, excuse me, to many thousands of young people, and broken through many obstacles in providing alternatives to crime, drugs, and street life through diligence, goals, hard work, and education. Latino Artbeat has collectively awarded, since its inception, over $2 million in scholarships and monetary prizes to its competition winners. Today, we are honoring the winners of the art scholarships contest for the Los Angeles area. This year, the students were tasked with creating a piece of visual art with the subject, What Hispanic Culture and Heritage Means to Me. The contest originates out of Chicago and takes place in five major cities. It is great to see so many involvement of levels through LA's best. We have representatives from beyond the bell, Vicky Garcia, Dale Petruilis, and Alvaro Cortez, who have helped bring the Latino Artbeat to LA Unified School District. This year, the national winner here in this region is actually a proud Angelina from the second council district from Verdugo Hills High School, Andy Hernandez. And as part of this award, Andy will receive a $1,000 check from Nordstrom's, and Rodney Friend is here today on behalf of Nordstrom's to give Andy that check. You're the important person today as well, and we'll have you do that in just a minute. And along with the other national winners, Andy's art will be featured on a poster calendar that will be unveiled at the United States Conference of Mayors during their winter meeting in Washington, DC, January 2009, and Andy's picture is in the window of Nordstrom's along with the other regional winners. And I just heard from Latino Artbeat that he's going to be going to Miami next week to be able to recognize with the other national winners. I'd like to now recognize the individuals, and I want to thank them for participating in this cultural event. You really are a future, and I look forward to hearing about all the great things to come for each of you and see a lot more of your art here in Los Angeles. We had a great breakfast this morning, I want to thank Superior Markets for their generous contribution, and Morty Waishar from the president of the Tarzana Bene Brith chapter, who was always there no matter what event we have in the San Fernando Valley. And so with that, I'd like to recognize our 2008 Latino art winners, and our first is Andy Hernandez from Verdugo Hills High School. Let's give him a great round of applause. And we'd like to demonstrate, wow, that, isn't that incredible, that art? Since I can't... Since I can barely draw a straight line, that's really amazing. So Andy, on behalf of the City Council, we want to present to you with this certificate, and congratulations. And I know Nordstrom's, maybe this is the time to give him a shout.
Yes.
Please, come on over.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodney Friend. I'm from Nordstrom, and we're proud to partner with Latino Artbeat and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and I have a $1,000 check for Mr. Andy Hernandez. Congratulations.
We want to thank Andy, and we want to thank Nordstrom's, because a lot of people bring like that fake check, you know, with them, and then they give it to you later. So you get the real deal at Nordstrom's. So thank you very much. I'd like to also acknowledge Daniel Kim, Best in Show winner from Fairfax High School. Daniel. Did you hold up your art? Mine? That's incredible. Thank you. This is for photography. Thank you very much. Our next is Min Kim, who's second-place winner from Van Nuys High School. Let's give her a great round of applause. Thank you. Can I show your art? Wow. Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Susan Choi, who's the third-place winner from Fairfax High School as well. Susan, can I show your art? Okay. Wow, beautiful. Congratulations. Our next is Uvaldo Tapia from Garfield High School. The next is, oh, I'm pronouncing this name correctly, May Sangualosi from Van Nuys High School. Is May here? No, okay. She's not here. Okay. We'll give that one to you. Esteban Pardida from the Downtown Magnet High School. Here, okay. And Julie Orlick from Fairfax High School. Okay, now here's one. Let's give them all a great round of applause for their amazing art. I'd now like to invite Al Cortez from Beyond the Bell. Actually, first, we'll hear from Brandon Lopez from the Latino Artbeat to say a few words. Don, I'm sorry, I said Don.
Good morning, Don Rossi Nuccio. I'm president of Latino Artbeat, and Brandon Lopez is my intern and assistant. This, that's okay.
We acknowledge interns and assistants, okay?
I think that's great. That's what I love about Los Angeles. Our program started out 12 years ago in Chicago, very humble beginnings and surroundings. That first year, we gave out $3,000 in scholarships, and we had about 300 kids that participated. This year, our 12th year, we've given out several million dollars in scholarships, and we're pleased to announce that this is the sixth year that we've partnered with Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, LAUSD, and we're so grateful for all of the districts and the schools that participate in our program. I want to congratulate all of the students, all of their families, but most important, I want to thank the schools and the teachers for being so diligent about organizing this program. Thank you, and let's enjoy the rest of the day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we'll take pictures of the background next. And now I'd like to ask Al Cortez from Beyond the Bell and the LA Unified School District.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you.
Good morning, and once again, thank you so much. Our partnership with the city is very important to us today in this month, Latino Heritage Month, it's also very important, our partnership with Latino Artbeat and Nordstrom's to, again, identify the wealth of talent that we have within our district. Beyond the Bell, Los Angeles Unified School District, we pride ourselves on providing a safe nurturing environment for all students, all 700,000, have an opportunity to attend supervised activities before school and after school. Every elementary, middle school has supervised activity and play on all of our sites from the close of the school day until 6:00 PM. Forty-three of our high schools this year will also have after-school programs. So I'm very proud of the fact that we provide a warm nurturing environment for our students to allow them to further their education, to further their studies, to further their skills, and these students are just representative of the many students that we have in our district that have incredible talent. And I want to thank the City Council, particularly Wendy Gruel, for recognizing them and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And colleagues, I want to thank the students. These are students we're going to hear about later on. We're going to hear about their art and where it's displayed across the city and across the country and potentially across the world. Their talent is something we want to nurture, and particularly in our school system. We think art and music are an integral part of that, and this program is really incredible. And I want to thank Latino Artbeat for what they've done in their contribution and doing this all across the country in those five cities, and I'm glad Los Angeles is one of them. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you. Let's give a great round of applause to all of our winners today.
Thank you very much, and our last presentation would recognize the council member from the 10th District, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members. Guys, get a little closer. I don't bite, so you get a little closer. A long time ago, and I won't even state the years, a long time ago, no, let me start it this way. This is an acknowledgement kicking off a week of press coverage and informing Los Angeles that this coming Saturday, a week from tomorrow, we're going to have our third Angel City Classic. And this is a game between Morehouse and Prairie View. It will be at the Coliseum, which is in Mr. Parks's district, and I'm sure that Mr. Parks will say something before the presentation is over. But the reason why I'm so proud to do this myself is because the Angel City Classic promotes historically black colleges throughout the United States of America. And as far as I know, I am the only member of this body a long time ago that went to Lincoln University, which is part of this system. In fact, the oldest African-American college in the country. So it's my honor to have Mr. Williams and Mr. Fleming here with me today, and I will allow them to tell you really what this is all about. But for those African-Americans and others who live on the West Coast, many of them never even heard of a lot of the African-American schools that provide top-quality educations throughout this country. So one of the things that we do with this Angel City Classic is we bring awareness to minority students here in Los Angeles. And the classic offers scholarships and just information. And for me personally, it was probably the greatest experience that I ever had in my life. There are nights now when I can sit up and tell you what I actually did, my freshman, sophomore, junior, and I don't remember, my senior year was a blur, but those first three I could tell you about. But it changed my life. In fact, it was there that I met then Congressman Ron Dellums, who was my inspiration to get into politics in the first place. This Angel City Classic is a brainchild of John Fleming here, and he's a very successful businessman, but he decided that he wanted to give something back to the community. So this was the project that he decided to take on, I believe with the assistance of his family. The first year that they had this classic, I want to say, oh, 20-plus-thousand people attended. The second year that they had this classic, 30-plus-thousand people attended. This year, in the Coliseum, they have already sold over 50,000 seats. And if anybody that is watching this on television is interested, I guess you could just call the Sports Arena box office and acquire tickets that you need. So what I want to do at this juncture is to ask my friend and the power behind this, Mr. John Fleming, to say a few words, and then I'd like to present you, Mr. Williams, a certificate from the greatest city on the planet, Los Angeles, where it welcomes the Angel City Classics and it references all of the phenomenal things that the historically black universities have done in this country. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me in welcoming Mr. Williams. I mean, no, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity to just be here, to be acknowledged. And Councilman Wesson just gave you the background of this event, and we feel it's very significant for one real reason. Our historically black colleges and universities still exist, and they are as relevant today as ever before, but most of them are on the East Coast or in the South. So this event was designed to bring two schools each year to Los Angeles primarily to inspire our youth and to remind all that the institutions are still serving our community very, very well. Many are becoming rainbows now, they're just not catering to African-Americans in particular. So they are focused on giving minorities from all walks of life the opportunity to come, be embraced, and receive an education. And when you look at these statistics, these schools produce over 50% of the undergraduate degrees awarded to African-Americans in this country. And when it comes to medical degrees, over 60 to 70% of the medical degrees awarded. So we are very proud of the schools, and next Saturday in the Coliseum is going to be a fun wholesome day. There will be a football game, there will be a battle of the bands, but there is also going to be so much more in terms of pride, camaraderie, and the cultural experience associated with these schools. Thank you very, very much for giving us the opportunity to be here this morning.
Mr. Parks.
Well, before, Mr. Parks, I wanted to make a request while I have these two gentlemen on the spot. Now, I went to Lincoln University, which is in Pennsylvania. When I went there, they had eliminated their football program. It is my understanding that they have since reinstated the football program. So I expect, as soon as that team really starts getting good, that one day they will be in the Coliseum playing, okay, long as, now with that, Mr. Parks, I got a commitment, so I give it to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing this program to the council because it is so important. And we met with Mr. Fleming maybe four years ago, and he started talking about a game in the Coliseum, and we said, Mr. Fleming, you know how big the Coliseum is? And he said, yeah, but we want to bring it here. We talked about the Home Depot, and he said, no, I want to come to the Coliseum. And we said, okay, we're going to work with you if you make a long-term commitment. Because so many people have come, they've done one event, doesn't work out, and they move on. He stuck to the plan. And to have 50,000 seats sold today in the Coliseum is phenomenal. And to know also that we have so many transplants from down south, back east that come here, so there's an allegiance to the game, plus so many of our African-American kids leave California to go to that experience for black colleges. So I think it's something that will hopefully one day in the near future rival the Bayou Classic that is down in New Orleans around Thanksgiving Day, to where it would become not only a game, but a cultural experience, to where people will travel as the event to come to. And so I just want to say, keep up the good work. We're certainly looking to see how this continues to grow. And I think also what's important is Mr. Fleming doesn't just come for the game. He also supports a variety of other activity, American marketplace. He's there for the Taste of Soul, he's there for the White Linen Party, he's there to come out to a variety of events in the City of LA because he spent a lot of time in this area. And so this is his second home now, but it's something in which he brings an event that will be a marker as to a nationwide event that people will get a look to, and again, in the short three years, to bring this to where you've gotten it has been phenomenal. Certainly want to let you know, we're supportive of you. Just keep up the good work because it is a very positive family event for the City of LA, and anytime you can bring in that kind of population for sales tax, bid tax, rental of cars, all those things help our treasury, but you give us a highlight of an event to where we all are very proud of. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson, I just wanted to stand and thank you. Some years ago, Councilman Holden was involved with the game, and Coach Robinson from Grambling was standing right where you are, Mr. Fleming. And it was an exciting moment in council to have such a legend in here. I was a staffer at the time, and people really wanted to meet what was then the winningest coach of all the college football. It's so exciting that the opportunity for these young people to come to the greatest football stadium in the country with its great history of the Olympic Games of '32 and '84, the Dodgers World Series of both the Rams and the Raiders and Super Bowls. They'll have a life experience of playing here, having been last week to the USC-Ohio State game and the buildup to that game. This is a special place to play. Your bringing it to Los Angeles is so special because they'll have a life memory. And as Mr. Parks said and Mr. Wesson alluded to it in his remarks, to build on this is really a great thing. So I pledge my support to you all. Congratulations to all who are involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Fleming, didn't you also tell me that there's going to be a big Pop Warner football game that will be played earlier?
Ten o'clock.
That day, 10:00. And I believe this is from the league that's sponsored by Snoop Dogg?
Yes.
And is he going to call the?
He's going to do the play-by-play.
So if anybody wants to hear Snoop Dogg do the play-by-play of the Pop Warner football game, this is your opportunity. Now, it is my pleasure to present to Luther Williams, who is the president of the Los Angeles Inter-Alumni Historically Black College and Universities Council, this certificate, this resolution from the great city of Los Angeles. Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation very much. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Elecon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti, 15 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Zion seconds without objection. That will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Zion moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. We can run through the agenda, please.
Items 1 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number one is a commission appointment. Would you like to hold that on your desk, Mr. President?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk. And number two, Mr. Parks, I assume you'll call special?
When you get up to it, we'd like to tie it to 45 and have both those presentations same time.
Got you. Thank you. Other specials, colleagues, 3 through 21. 3 through 21, yes, Ms. Hahn.
Six, please.
Six for the lovely Ms. Hahn.
Lovely.
And other specials?
Lovely, Ms. Hahn.
Okay, let's take up the balance then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. I can send 3/4 with without objection, please. Next items, please.
Items 22 through 42 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Mr. President, items number 22 and 23 are commission appointments. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. And Ms. Hahn?
Yes, 41, please.
Okay, 41 from Ms. Hahn. And do we have cards on any of these?
Mr. President, there are cards on 31, 34, 40, and 42.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public.
Oh, and also, there's a card on 35.
On 35, thank you. Okay, we'll open and close the other public hearings. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next, on the continuation agenda, item 43 is an item notice for public hearing. This is a determination of public convenience.
Uh, Mr. President, there are cards on thirty-one, thirty-four, forty, and forty-two.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public.
Oh, and also, there's a card on thirty-five.
On thirty-five, thank you. Okay, we'll open and close the other public hearings. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next on the continuation agenda, item forty-three is an item notice for public hearing. This is a determination of public convenience or necessity in Council District fourteen. Findings and recommendations are required.
Okay, uh, Mr. Weezer, on item forty-three, I think that's in the fourteenth Council District, does he want to make a motion to approve, or...
No.
Okay. Mr. Weezer moves, uh, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, next items, come... Okay, come one second. Um, number forty-four, please.
Next is item number forty-four, and that is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Um, anybody wishing to call forty-four special?
Counselor?
Yep. Mr. Reyes?
Counsel President, um, I do have some language, is it, should I introduce it now, or...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Should I like to add the following language to condition number eight of the engineering report? And the following would be, if the owners of Lot thirteen do not provide their consent within fifteen days of being requested to do so through certified mail, and in parentheses, required to be sent return receipt requested, close parentheses, their consent will not be necessary for the completion of vacation. And that would be for condition number eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. If there's no objection, we'll accept that as friendly amendment, and if we can open the roll on forty-four as amended, close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item forty-five, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held, ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on this item.
Okay, there's no objection to consideration, we will consider that, and we have a card, we'll call that special from the public. We can, yes, Mr. Weston?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask a, a question where it relates to, to item, uh, forty-five. It, it's my understanding that there's votes are scheduled this afternoon at four or five. It's also my understanding that we haven't technically seen the information as of yet. Does it not make more sense for us to make this a special item for Tuesday when we have all of the details, or...
Well, it's not quite before us, but why don't, I'll come and get the CLA to come over and let you know the, the current status, but there, there may be some useful information today, but I haven't checked in with our CLA, so...
Because I just think it makes, it makes more sense to have a, a detailed discussion when we have all of the data, and we will have all of that on Tuesday.
Okay, good. Absolutely. We'll hold on table real quick for now, and we'll see if we can't resolve that, and if so, we'll continue that. Uh, next item, uh, sorry, if we can call the, uh, special meeting roll, please.
Elecon, Cardenas, Gruehl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, fifteen members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first item, please.
Item number forty-six is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call forty-six special? Mr. Parks, all right. Next items, please.
Next are items number forty-seven and forty-eight, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on item forty-eight.
Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, um, that is before us, we'll call it special for the card for forty-eight, and I'll call it special both of those items as well. And if we can continue the special meeting into the regular meeting, and, um, if we can take that objection, forty-seven and forty-eight out of order first, and then we'll come back to public comment, uh, because of some of the timeliness of it. Okay, we'll take that up now.
Our first speaker on that matter will be Council President Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Um, we're taking this before public comment just because of the timeliness of trying to get this forthwith to the mayor and out, um, to make sure we can have our lobbyists in Washington before the close of work as well, uh, have this as an official position from the city. Um, colleagues, I ask for your support, um, and thank Ms. Gruehl, um, and thank, um, the other secondaries, Mr. Smith, whose office has been so active in the aftermath of the MetroLink disaster, in putting forward a very clear voice on positive train control systems. Um, I want to thank my staff for the work that they've been doing on this. Um, the National Transportation Safety Board has called for positive train control systems, which are electronic systems that would, would prevent an accident such as what we saw last week since nineteen ninety. Not only have they been calling for it, but there have been two bills that have been before us, uh, in Congress, one by Senator Lautenberg and one by Congressman Oberstarr, who many of us met with when we were in Washington, D.C. last year, uh, that would call for the implementation and the funding of the implementation of a positive train control system throughout the country. The estimated cost of this is about two-point-three billion dollars. When you think of the vastness of our train system, and when you think of the cost of the wreckage, of the rescue operations, and most importantly, the cost in human lives, we simply cannot afford to have another accident like this happen again. Human error will always happen. Uh, human instincts, such as what we saw tragically in Atwater Village when someone took their car, thinking they were going to commit suicide and then, um, cowardly got out of that car and left it, which caused so many lives to be lost before this accident. Human error will always occur, and we can't account for that. What we can do is take technology to make sure that it overcomes human error and that we prevent these tragedies from happening. For two decades, Washington has been listening, but we haven't seen the action that we need. The, uh, Federal Railway Administration Chief Joseph Boardman said about the MetroLink one-eleven crash, "A positive train control system would have stopped the train before there would have been a collision." The two bills that are before us, uh, in the first motion, S. eighteen-eighty-nine, which is Lautenberg's Railroad Safety Enhancement Act, has passed the Senate and is currently before the House. It would implement PTC systems by twenty-eighteen. H.R. twenty-ninety-five, which is Oberstarr's Federal Railroad Safety Improvement Act, would call for this by twenty-fourteen. Our second motion embraces our own Senators Feinstein and Boxer's resolution to get this done by twenty-twelve. So we essentially have resolution to support legislation to require implementation of positive train control systems, and urges Congress to grandfather in the victims of last Friday's MetroLink Rail Union Pacific crash, and shorten the timetable for implementing positive train control systems. Uh, as I mentioned, Senators Feinstein and Boxer introduced on Tuesday the Rail Collision Prevention Act. Um, this would set a deadline of December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. A second deadline would be set for two thousand and fourteen on all major lines. Two thousand and twelve would get those high-risk ones taken care of. This is urgent, colleagues, we must act now. It would raise penalties to a hundred thousand dollars per violation of the implementation plan, it would have an annual review process, and this would support the Rail Collision Prevention Act. We can't change what happened, but we can change it from happening again. And today, when this city, which has, with its public safety personnel acted so heroically in the wake of this tragedy, has the most powerful voice in this country, but we've got allies throughout the United States, other cities and towns, communities that have been visited by tragedy just like ours, the time to act is now. I urge your support.
Ms. Gruehl.
Uh, thank you very much, um, and thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, we've been working together to ensure that, uh, the public understands that we as a city council, even though we don't have direct responsibility for MetroLink and, uh, what happens on the MetroLink, uh, we do have responsibility, use the bully pulpit as a leadership and a government entity who encourages people to take public transportation and to ensure their safety. We want to make sure that they understand that everything is being done, and I want to compliment our legislative leaders, uh, on the federal level, who moved very quickly to ensure, uh, that there was Federal, uh, Railroad Safety Improvement Act, uh, which would be considered to see, where's the latest technology? Uh, where can we ensure that, uh, those people who are riding in public transportation know that the technology is there, that the GPS system that could stop trains if they go past a certain point, as it did in this instance, uh, be able to slow them down, uh, with not only, uh, human doing that, but also having a technology, and we know that it exists. And so, as we stood this week, um, at the funeral yesterday, uh, so many of us were there, the police officer, uh, who gave, uh, her life in this MetroLink crash, and I remember thinking, wondering, uh, why everyone knew immediately that she was a police officer? Um, and it was because she was wearing her uniform. And she chose, as we heard in the funeral, uh, services yesterday, she wore her uniform on the train going back and forth in the morning, uh, because she felt it was important to have that presence, and she was proud to be a Los Angeles police officer. And so for all of the victims that are out there, this legislation and our support for that is so critically important. And what we will be doing today is, uh, taking a strong stand that we want the federal government to engage. Uh, I am so pleased that, uh, Richard Katz will be a new member of the MetroLink Board and someone I respect deeply who will look at, uh, important changes that need to be made at MetroLink. Uh, so I stand today with my colleagues, um, Eric Garcetti and many others, um, Greg Smith and Dennis Zine, who signed, uh, this, uh, motion, to be able to ensure that we have safety in our MetroLink, that we can avoid any type of, uh, crisis as we've had in this past week, and to save lives. So I, uh, stand before you, uh, asking that the council unanimously approve, uh, both of these items, uh, before us today. Uh, it is critically important. We have the technology to do this, uh, and we stand, uh, with those victims and their families and the rest of the country to ensure we have safe rail in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labange, and then we have a public comment.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Folks, there was another, um, incident this morning, you know, uh, with Metro, uh, Link and with the Metro Bus. Um, this issue is bigger than the issue that we're talking about with the federal government. First of all, the federal government one is a no-brainer. The east coast put all those safety devices in place, California didn't. And thank you both Senators for your leadership on it, and obviously, uh, after this terrible tragedy, I hope they get it in place like tomorrow. Uh, I think Richard Katz said some really great things. But the issue more local to us that we have some control over is when we do all of these various light rails, we're doing it in some places at grade. And this at-grade business is always an opportunity for an accident. It can be a car, it can be a bus, it can be a person. And what happened this morning was between a train, a MetroLink train, and a Metro Bus. Nobody got hurt, nothing happened. Um, yes, sir?
MetroLink, it was, it was the Blue Line.
Blue Line, yeah, yeah. Okay, Metro Rail, thank you, Richard, for, for that.
Clarification, clarification.
But once again, it was, it was the notion at grade, which is a more local issue that we have an issue with, and I know a lot of the politics is, it's more expensive sometimes to go underground or above ground or so on. I know Culver City and us were working on the Expo line when it were to hit Culver City, and Culver City and us, of course, agreed we didn't want it at grade, if for no other reason the incredible gridlock it would continue to create on the west side, but more importantly, the safety issue. So I dare say, yes, we support this, and I know we will unanimously, but I think it's also a tip for MTA to look at all of our light rail systems as we move forward with them, and talk about, in a more serious sense, about at-grade versus above-grade or under-grade. And if it costs more, I think it needs to cost more for safety issues as well as the gridlock issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. God bless the memory of all those victims who a week ago today were living and breathing in this city, anticipating a weekend. Uh, I don't know who's here representing the CLA or who's here could speak to this issue here, but I want to know who in the city has the vision to watch this all the time? Are we perplexed to find out that these conditions for safety were not in place? Mr. Wickham, is that correct? Yeah, uh, who, are you in charge of this? Could you speak to it, someone from the CLA? Is Mr. Miller here? Who in the city family is to look at this to say, "You know what, you should be watching this, council, because these are things that people have expressed to me, why in this day and age was such a tragedy occurred?"
In terms of the rail safety issues?
Correct.
Okay, we can talk to the, um, the Department of Transportation and start with them and see if they have any role in playing with this, and we will look at other agencies, um, and confer with them to see and track what they're doing, and, um, we can report back to you on...
Yeah, okay, obviously, we're all going to support this, but I think there should be someone. Again, when I spoke last week, this week, about infrastructure and looking at it six months before the budget, there should be somebody whose eyes on the ball is not, uh, in this building, but out, is it, on, on safety factors, uh, that, of all our infrastructure, and constantly bring it to our attention to see, because I think everyone is very disappointed that systems weren't in place, that are in place in other countries in the world that could have prevented this horrible accident. Thank you. I vote.
Mr. Elecon.
Members, I, I, I have mixed emotions about these kinds of, uh, motions immediately in the aftermath of, um, a tragic event, only because it, it seems to shed light as if the city of Los Angeles has a lot of control here. We have, we have some sway, but we have very little control. Uh, the, the rail, uh, authorities, uh, are largely driven by federal law, and I can tell you that the railroad companies, uh, typically control the legislation that emerges out of Congress with regard to the rail systems. I, I believe, for example, that, uh, that the reason the technology was not supported was not just, uh, a local economic issue, I believe it was a federal economic issue that had to do more with the freight industry, uh, rail industry not wanting, uh, these improvements. I say that because, e- e- even if I'm wrong, the bottom line is, it's going to be very difficult to get this policy passed, and we are going to have to have very strong strategic partners if we are going to get this kind of legislation passed. And, and so, while I'm happy to support the resolution because it is right on policy, I also believe that if we truly want to see this happen, we are going to have to have very strong strategic partners in the process to get Congress to do what it has to do. Typically, uh, measures like this have a lot of fire, uh, when the, when the incident occurs, but they burn out over time, and, uh, our, our, uh, our very positive intent, uh, ends up being nothing more than, uh, well wishes. So I only hope that we are prepared to, uh, be in this for the long haul, to support the various federal legislators who are promoting, uh, these safety mechanisms being installed, and, uh, and review the system as a whole, uh, because what happens in L.A. will have an effect on states throughout the nation. I'm hopeful that we, we can improve. Uh, as Mr. Rosendahl hinted, uh, the cost of this particular event in terms of the liability is far greater than it would have cost the system had they paid for these, um, these safety devices. Uh, although, uh, it, at the time, it seemed like a good idea, perhaps, uh, it doesn't end up being, uh, now we know. So with that, uh, I do support this, but I only hope that we, uh, have the tenacity to follow this through, uh, until we see those safety mechanisms in place.
Thank you, Mr. Elecon, that matters. House, one public speaker, Mr. Sax, Arnold Sax, on this item, please.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sax, thank you very much. Um, there was a meeting at, um, Southern California Regional Railroad Association, and one of the speakers, public speakers, got up and denounced the Railroad's Association for not taking action sooner and wanting to get the premium, premium safety measures when there's other measures available. I applaud you, Councilman Rosendahl, for your statements regarding at-grade crossings for the Gold Line, but why is it okay to have at-grade crossings for the Gold Line in L-, uh, not the Gold Line, for the Expo line? Why is it okay to have at-grade crossings for the Expo line in L.A., but it's not okay to have at-grade crossings for the Expo line in Culver City? Don't we serve, isn't that the argument that's gone before, the exposition, Construction Authority, I don't know, or maybe like the last twenty-four months that's been in, in service? Why is that okay? And then when you look at cost, and you look at, say, well, thirty-five million for the mid-city exposition line, when there is no such animal as the mid-city exposition construction authority line, there you go, your cost. When you consistently funnel money into these divisions that are just fronts for stealing from the public, then the cost will always go up. Yes, it's needed. Councilman Garcetti said nineteen ninety, so that's eighteen years before action's been taken. I don't believe this is the first rail, this, um, collision that's occurred in the United States, it's just the latest, and who knows, there could be one this afternoon. It's... It's about time. It's about who's lining whose pockets with money. And it's about, it's cheaper to pay for public disasters than it is to actually put into effect safety measures.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. This matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, that matter passes. Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could reconsider Number 43, we have an amending motion.
Number 43, open it for reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item here, we've talked to the local police department, local community, and we have some voluntary conditions that the applicant has put forward. We want to make sure those are on the record. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to vote on the matter with the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, thank you. Our next matter, thank you for the clergy for your patience, we're going to take out a Number 46. Number 46.
President? Mr. President?
Mr. Parks, hold on a second. We just want clarification. Public comment will come after this. We have a request by Councilman Parks to move 46 forward, and Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I would just like to give some background. As you know, we have on the agenda today the new contract for the marathon. We also have an amending motion. That's a technical amendment that's going around now. But I think what's important, and we have several members of the clergy here to talk about what their concerns were as it relates to having this race historically on one of the Sabbaths, and they made an impassioned plea, and part of this contract does make that move. And let me ask that we go open public comment at this time, and then we could address the issue of the committee report.
And we have with us this morning, good morning, Father John Bacchus, Reverend Charles Robertson, Reverend Howard Kim, Reverend Richard Martini, Philip Curtis, and Ginger Williams. Father Bacchus, why don't you lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Very quickly here, this day was dedicated to a day of recognizing service. All of us as clergy people are involved in service to the broader community. We want to thank you in advance for taking on this and approving the contract with the city and the Going the Distance organization. Our interest is to make the L.A. Marathon a successful and very profitable event for all concerned. To use a cliche here, the cliche is this should be a win-win for everybody. For many, many, many years now, the telethon, rather, I've done telethons.
Marathon.
The marathon has impacted in a very negative way the faith communities of the Christian, the Jewish, and the Islamic faiths. It has interrupted streets, it has cut down the areas there, it has turned our congregations upside down every year. This year, there is a wonderful opportunity, and I know you're looking at it and taking it, to make sure that the marathon is run on a day which is a federal holiday, and we understand it has tentatively been decided to put it on the 16th of February, which is President's Day. This will work beautifully for everybody, because it will not impact the faith communities. It will bring greater business to the L.A. area, because people will be coming to town on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and staying through Monday, and you will have the support of the faith communities in this venture, and it'll duplicate what the Boston Marathon does and has been doing it on a federal holiday. So we encourage your vote and approval on this so that all elements of our community participate, and indeed, this becomes a win-win situation for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father Bacchus. Reverend Robertson?
Yes, I'm Reverend Chuck Robertson. Today is the 19th of September. I've been retired from the Wilshire Presbyterian Church at the corner of Third and Western for 19 days. I'm the former president of the Wilshire Center Interfaith Council, serving as president for three years, and both of those are relevant to my remarks. During the nine years I served as pastor of Wilshire Presbyterian Church, every Sunday the marathon was run, I either had to walk, take a bike, or park my car on the other side of the line, walk to my car, drive to church, drive back, and walk home. It didn't make any difference how the marathon was run on that day. It always impacted the congregation that I served. Shifting the route made no difference. So shifting the day makes a lot of difference. Speaking in terms of the interfaith community, obviously, a Sunday impacts directly the Christian faith community. But along the Wilshire Corridor, we have the Wilshire Boulevard Temple. On Vermont Avenue, we have the Islamic Center of Southern California. Because their Sabbaths, and our coalition is called Save Our Sabbaths, because their Sabbaths are on weekends, Friday and Saturday, their social activities are held, guess when? On Sundays. So the marathon, for all the years it has run, has negatively impacted the social events of the other two faith communities of the Abrahamic tradition. Hence, they have joined together in the Interfaith Council to support this effort several years ago. We rejoice in this dialogue and this opportunity to shift the L.A. Marathon, but we look forward to shifting the dates of other weekend-running events that have been held on Sundays, like the triathlon, the most recent one which impacted our communities just as badly as they had under the L.A. Marathon. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Our next speaker, Reverend Kim.
Good afternoon, Council President and Honorable L.A. City Council Members. I am Reverend Howard Kim, pastor of the Korean Presbyterian Church of South Bay in Gardena, representing both Southern California Council of Korean Churches and the Save Our Sabbaths Committee. My friend Reverend John Song, pastor of Mi-ju Peace Church in Koreatown, worked very hard to shift Marathon Day to Monday holiday since 1994 after his faithful church member had a serious automobile accident and became permanently paralyzed while she was struggling to avoid very confused and unfamiliar traffic on Marathon Sunday. As one L.A. have researched a few years ago, while I was a part of the team, L.A. Marathon was growing in its size and quality as it is today. On the other hand, that every Marathon Sunday approximately 500 churches and 100,000 believers had to give up their sacred weekly participation. All our religious institutions, like mosques and temples and churches are, as you are aware, are deeply meaningful places, especially to those more than 100,000 people, hardworking and vulnerable Angelinas, who either came from many different countries as immigrants or who lived here so long, yet they are all relationally connected with their respective spiritual homes for weekly nourishment and sacred worship and fellowship while they pursue American dreams. I assure you that no one in our group opposed L.A. Marathon at all, yet we have eagerly prayed that one day we may all worship at our worship houses on Sabbath days and all run together on Monday holiday in February. We need your strong support to set L.A. Marathon on Monday holiday from 2009 and thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you. Father Martini.
I want to be real clear about what this coalition of ministers and reverends are about. We like the marathon. We think it's a great event for the city of Los Angeles, but not on a Sabbath. What our main concern is not the route. We changed the route three years ago, and we worked together with one L.A. and the mayor's office, we were able to make some headway, but simply they changed the route. Now, that has helped my church, Transfiguration Church on King Boulevard, it helped some other churches. There was a time when only 12 members could come to our church when the marathon ran in front of us. That's been changed for me, but for these other churches, we've just made it worse by changing the route. What we want is not a change of route, a change of the day. So we highly encourage you to pass this resolution that does say the marathon ought to be run on a federal Monday. Save our Sabbaths. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Philip Curtis, followed by Ginger Williams. Mr. Rosendorf?
I want to acknowledge that the last gentleman's father is a constituent of mine, the Palisades. We call him Dr. Mike, who's an amazing man, and golly, he's got a great son. Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thanks for that information. Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name is Phil Curtis. I'm Director of Government Affairs at AIDS Project Los Angeles. APLA is a partner with the National AIDS Marathon Training Program, which organizes and trains participants to run and raise funds in the Los Angeles Marathon. In the past three years, they have raised over $10 million for care, treatment, and services for people living with HIV/AIDS in Los Angeles County through this program. We are very optimistic about the change in ownership in the marathon, and we appreciate the faith community's concerns. However, we are concerned about changing the date of this year's marathon, or the upcoming marathon, on March 1st, 2009. This could negatively impact recruitment and training of the runners in this program. It could negatively impact fundraising capability, and the organizers will have to redo materials that they have already developed and print it up for this year's marathon. So we hear the concerns, we understand them, we appreciate them. We just hope that this discussion will move forward to 2010 and leave 2009 where it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker on this matter?
Yes, hi, my name is Ginger Williams. I'm the program director at the National AIDS Marathon Training Program, and I just want to read what Philip said in terms of, we definitely understand the concerns of the coalition and understand the race day on Sunday. Our concern right now is the impact of this year. We haven't started recruiting back in July. We've already spent $80,000 on advertisement and promoting the March 1st date. We've already signed up 200 runners are currently registered. Our goal is to sign up 500 runners, and we're currently, every day, having five to six meetings each evening to recruit people currently, while we're not sure what date we can actually tell the runners they're running on. So our concern is not, is just the impact on simply this year and where we are in terms of recruiting. Each one of our participants raises $1,600 to benefit AIDS Project Los Angeles, and right now we're on track to have a very good goal and are concerned with the date being changed so short to our training schedule and everything else that we have to impact. So again, it's just the impact that will have on us for this year as opposed to future years, we can make those changes that we need to make. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Reyes, our next speaker on this matter, followed by Mr. Labonge, Mr. Rosendorf. Hold on, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
Let me finish my time.
Okay.
Let me ask the staff to come up so we can quickly go through the deal points and also with some brief explanation, advise us why we're late in the game in the sense of how the sale of the marathon has really created this platform to be discussing this today. So Lynn, if you can kick it off and give an overview of why we're at this date, and also hit briefly on the deal points, particularly the issue of the charities and the full-cost recovery and things that would be of interest to the council. Can you hold my time?
I'm Lynn Ozawa from the CLA's office.
We can't hear you. Speak louder, please.
I'm Lynn Ozawa with the CLA's office, and this is Terri Sauer from the CAO's office at my left. We've both been in negotiations with Going the Distance based on council's instruction, which is the firm that had been in talks with the current marathon provider, Divine Racing L.A. Divine Racing, we were unaware that they were seeking a buyer to take over this contract from them. However, we've come to learn that Divine, although they said that they would continue to put on the marathon for 2009 if they had to, they really weren't in a strong financial position to do so. So that's why they were trying to sell the race. It's to the city's benefit, we believe, that this sale go through so that we have a properly financed marathon going forward. During the discussions, it became clear from the coalition that the race day was really impacting the church community, and it was the time to make that change to a holiday Monday, and that became part of our negotiation. There were many moving pieces with this negotiation, one of them being the Monday holiday, and we were finally able to come to an agreement as late as yesterday, or earlier this week, I should say, that everybody was satisfied with. And so we recommend going forward with the sale as proposed and going through with the assignment of the contract to the new proposed owner, Going the Distance.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, Lynn, let me ask, if this opportunity had not arisen, what would be the timeline as for the termination of the current contract?
The current contract goes through 2015.
So we would not be able to really address these without reopening the contract to 2015?
Yes.
Okay. The other issue dealing with full-cost recovery, have we made some adjustment on that marathon model?
Yeah, the current agreement with Divine Racing Los Angeles includes a discount that the city is allowing from their additional costs for changing the race route two years ago. With the new contract that's proposed, Going the Distance will pay the city the full city costs. They will reimburse us for our incremental race day costs. In addition, they'll continue to pay us our royalty payments, and they've made the commitment that they will put up whatever resources are needed to get this race back on track.
Will it also include the back pay that the city's owed by Divine?
Yes, and since 2006, there have been some outstanding payments from Divine Racing Los Angeles in the amount of about $530,000, which should have been paid to the city and are still outstanding. When this sale closes with Going the Distance, Divine will pay us upon closing the amounts that are outstanding. That's, you know, $530,000 that will go to the general fund.
And then also, does the city have any additional control as it relates to future transfer or ownership of the marathon?
Yes. One of the things that we were able to negotiate with Going the Distance is that any future sale, transfer, assignment would be subject to the city's approval. In addition, the race could not be put up as collateral for a loan, which Divine Racing has done, that we were unaware of, and that would also not be allowable without the city's consent.
Also, in moving the date from March to a holiday, what is the difference in numbers of days? Is that a couple of weeks, three weeks, or...
I believe it's about three weeks.
So it's three weeks difference.
Yes.
Could you give us a little overview on the difference on the intellectual properties and what the city is going to benefit from this new contract?
The current contract provides for 7.5% of the adjusted gross revenues from using the trademark that the city owns. The negotiated contract provides for that same 7.5%, however, it's capped at $189,000. So it would be the lesser of either 7.5% or $189,000. That $189,000 cap would be adjusted by the CPI annually, and this is really necessary for the new owner to come in and be able to properly, well, they had to buy the contract from Divine Racing, so there was a big outlay there, as well as to properly finance operations going forward.
And then how does this new contract impact the charity programs?
The new contract includes a provision that Going the Distance will have a 5K race, and that is the event that the official charities, there are about 50 different charitable organizations that have been using the 5K that's run on the same day as the that have been using the 5K that's run on the same day as the marathon, as a fundraiser for those organizations. In our current contract with Divine Racing, there is not that, it says that they can run a 5K. In the new contract, it's definitive that they will have a 5K and will allow the official charities to use that event for their fundraising purposes.
And then, finally, what are the additional controls in reporting that the council now will have as far as maintaining oversight and guidelines and goals of the marathon?
The current contract does not have any reporting requirements. There are no goals or guidelines that the organization needs to meet in running the marathon for us. The new contract requires the establishment of a working group between city departments and the contractor that will meet regularly throughout the year, and the city staff will be in a much better position to determine if there are any problems that are occurring or about their potential problems, so that we can bring it to the council and mayor's attention, so that they can try to be taken care of before we run into being in the same situation we're in today.
And will we have a member of the charities, representative from charities?
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, I neglected to say that we will include a member of the charities as well.
And then, you mentioned, is there some mandated reporting after the race and prior to the race?
Yes. There are mandated reports. There's one pre-race report that will come in no later than 45 days prior to the race, and then there will be a post-game report, or post-race report, that will be due no later than 90 days following the race, so that we can inform the council and the mayor of exactly how successful the race was.
And on the amended motion, is there anything of significance? We've got some technical amendments?
Yes. The motion that's before you are basically technical amendments that are amending recommendations 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the report. They're basically tying, the first one makes the language a little tighter about the city's approval being contingent on the sale of the race going through between Divine and Going the Distance, and that the city also needs to be paid its outstanding amounts before the action that hopefully you take today becomes effective.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the second one is basically putting before you approval of the third contract amendment as well as the first contract amendment to the settlement agreement, which are the legal documents in order to go forward with the sale. The committee report had the deal points in it and instructed staff, the city attorney, to go and draft documents based on those deal points, but between committee on Monday and today, they were able to prepare those documents. So, now those are before you for final approval, and we recommend authorization of the mayor to go ahead and execute the agreements. And the last two recommendations have to do with, again, the city staff working with the contractor to work more cooperatively, so that we can try to work out problems in advance, as well as keep the entire city family apprised of the progress of the Los Angeles Marathon going forward.
Let me ask the CAO, do you have any comments on the report?
No, we're, Mr. Chairman, we've worked with the CLA and been part of the negotiations, and we support the report as amended and support the recommendations before you.
Thank you. Let me just thank the religious leaders for coming down and bringing this to our attention, and colleagues, I'd ask for an eye vote on moving forward on what is viewed as a crown jewel of the city, the marathon, but it certainly, in this contract, brings for more control to the city. It certainly brings the full-cost recovery, and I think it satisfies our religious community as relates to allowing the Sabbaths to remain free for service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Just a clarification, it was $537,391.34 on the outstanding balance due. Question, is there interest and penalties on that?
No, there are not.
Okay. And just one more point of clarification before I turn over to my colleagues. On item number C, it relates to the permit fees and incremental staff costs above the average field and supervisory field deployment. Does that include the Department of Transportation, Fire Department, and other city agencies that are involved in this?
Yes.
Okay. So, all city departments involved?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reyes. Follow Mr. LeBonde and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and support this direction that we've been taking. Thank you, Bernard Parks, for your leadership. A few weeks ago, Councilman Perry and myself met with a whole room full of representatives from different churches, people of the cloth, and it's great to see we could come to a conclusion in a very expedient manner. I also want to take the time to thank Frank McCord, the McCord Group. Many folks know that, yes, he just happens to own the Dodgers, but he is focused on this particular event to make it a world-class event. So, it's great to have the type of leadership and investors that are taking on this kind of civic pride. So, I thank Frank McCord and the McCord Group for their stepping up and everyone working together, and, again, the staff for reaching this level of understanding and agreements. Thank you so much. Urgent eye vote.
Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk and Mr. Parks, on this issue here, the committee that I chair should have reviewed some part of this. So, I'm going to waive everything out, and bless me, Father, but I want to make sure our Department of Transportation is concerned on this, because not everybody gets a federal holiday off. So, what impact it would have to others is important to study. And look, I could support the transfer, I could support all of that stuff, but the issue of the date change, I have a concern with. I have a concern with that we do. We all have to sacrifice, and you know who your supreme power is? He'd great sacrifice. But on this issue here, I wonder what impact we may have on the rest of Los Angeles, who may not have any faith, but have a faith to try to get to work on a date that others are off. Has anyone studied that, Lynn, at all? From the city? Is Arum, anybody, Tommy Plummer, anybody over DOT, Rita Robinson, Fisher?
Not to my knowledge.
So, all I'm saying, members, and I support, and I did say hello to Father John earlier on that, but I've been reading this report, this is a significant deal for Los Angeles, and I support the transfer, but I believe, and the clerk told me, that this should have been reviewed by committee. This is a significant change of a date. What the AIDS Marathon people spoke of, and I see them train in Griffith Park every weekend, is people are focused on a date that they're going to reach their goal, and to start this event and know that goal is set for March on a Sunday of next year, and then to move it up to a Monday, where people may have planned their visits to Los Angeles. And I think I could resolve it within a quick order of time, but if that issue could be broken out, because I do want to know from our engineers, when you close Highland Avenue on a Sunday morning, yes, we do affect the Methodist Church there, but we do open the street up right as the runners pass, because now we're point-to-point. But other impacts that take place there. And also, think too, and I haven't made it to church every Sunday, and I'm looking at you, Father, because I'm a Catholic, so I'm talking to all of you, but still, at the same time, if parishioners could come out and help those who run by and salute those that run by and make it a festival like it first started out to be, maybe something. So, members, I ask that for the issue of the day that the marathon has run out, we break it off, I'll have it in committee, I'll have it back here, sir. I want to know what transportation engineers. Maybe it is too much if it is on a holiday. What is the best holiday to it? What is the best corresponding to other marathon runs? No one's talked to me about that. All right, second by Janice Hahn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. You are a final speaker. Mr. Garcetti, on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question on the reimbursement for above the normal supervisory and field, which can you run us through the departments that that applies to? Is it all departments? I mean, are we talking fire and all the deployment?
Generally, it's been fire, DOT, police.
Street services, I assume?
Street services. I think those are the primary ones.
Sanitation, maybe. Okay. Okay. So, it would cover all of them. Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That matter is now before us. There are no...
I can approve everything as the CLA, except on the date change, so we could focus on that and impact it would have on traffic and impact that it has on houses of worship.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. LeBonde, you making a motion to separate something out?
That one item.
Because it's all one package right now.
Item number D, D, as in distance.
Mr. Parks?
Let me recommend that, I think we need to move forward on the package. I don't have a problem that we study and bring forth the issues that Mr. LeBonde may be concerned with, which gives DOT the understanding of what and how they might mitigate them as they go through the planning process. But I think we need to have that study and whatever, but not to alter the date and the package that's moving forward, because there's a contract attached to it. There are people buying this race. They have to start some point in time. It's less than six months ahead, but I think we need DOT to look at the issue and bring forth information for mitigation purposes, rather than holding the date, because at some point in time, we're going to have to have a race.
Let me ask you a question, then. Why didn't it come to this committee? Why didn't it come to the committee that my responsibility is on to chair the issue of the date change?
Mr. LeBonde.
The date change makes a big difference.
Mr. LeBonde, I understand your concern. There's other speakers now coming up. Councilmember Gruehl, Rosendahl, and Mr. Parks. Councilmember Gruehl?
I want to make sure that what Mr. LeBonde suggested, and I think I'm with Mr. Parks on this one, is that, because I don't, they're going to finalize their purchase agreement today, and there are some assumptions being made by those that are purchasing this marathon, and want to make sure that if a date is separated, that doesn't negatively impact their closing that deal. So, I don't know if there's a representative from the marathon with the purchasers.
There are representatives here, if you would like them to come forward.
Ms. Gruehl, would you like to have them answer the question?
Well, the question is, if Mr. LeBonde suggested that we separate the date change from the contract, I think, Mr. Parks, I have the same concern that that was kind of the whole package. How will that impact? Yes. How will that impact?
Does the date change happen next year?
Yes. The date change is to happen beginning in 2009, and quite frankly, the timeline is very short for planning a race for March, let alone February. So, if we were to wait and analyze the date, it would...
That's my concern. So...
It would impact 2009.
Mr. Zuckin, would you like to respond? Sorry to, but I think you're the only one that can answer that question for us.
Mr. Zuckin?
Good morning, members. Thank you for this opportunity. I guess I'm now an expert in racing, because I'm such a great baseball expert. The issue of moving the date, when we came to, and we're very excited of what's about to happen for Los Angeles today, the issue of the day of the week of the race is something that's been on many people's agenda since this discussion started. We felt it was an okay thing to do to move it to a Monday race. The Boston Marathon is run on a state holiday on a Monday and on Patriots' Day, and we feel it's the right thing to do. But quite frankly, a lot of the pressure that was applied was from people around this circle and other people in this building to move the race, and we wanted to go ahead and do that. This was not the easiest of negotiations, but we can't wait.
Okay.
If the determination is, we like to keep this package together today. If you all want to break the package up, but we can't wait forever. So, we have until Monday, until we close the transaction with Mr. Divine.
Because I think the issues that have been brought up can be addressed as we go forward as to how to deal with DOT and so forth and changing the date, but I think I would support Mr. Parks in that we need to move with the entire package today.
As everybody's well aware, we have a terrific relationship with DOT. They're at our ballpark 81 nights a year, and hopefully in the next couple of days, it'll add some more days to that. So, we will work in a cooperative manner with DOT and this council, but at the end of the day, it's your policy decision, not ours.
And Mr. Zuckin, for the record, you represent the prospective...
I'm here on behalf of the McCord Group. Yes, thank you.
The prospective new owners.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. LeBonde, Mr. Parks.
Just a quick comment. I think it was a clarification issue, Mr. LeBonde. This particular great event, we all talked about it in various committees about doing it on Presidents' Day in February. It seemed to work for everybody. Of course, our other issue was the charities. Charities were immediately accepted, and we all kind of agreed that Presidents' Day was a great day. There's a time-sensitive moment here. We didn't want to do it a Sunday for obvious reasons. Different churches and different groups had other commitments, so with your support, and we go to February, Presidents' Day, they can go forward, and we can get this marathon going, and everything will be great, 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 great.
Mr. Cardenas?
Call for the question.
Call for the question. The matter is up?
No.
Open.
No marathon on Griffith Park, so it is a 10-person vote.
It's at the 10-person vote on this matter. Open the roll. On the, call the question.
Yes is to end.
Yes to end debate.
No is to continue.
Yes to end debate, no to continue. Mr. Parks, clarification?
No, clear my machine.
The machine's not working for Mr. Parks? Mr. Garcetti will fix your machine. Yes to end the debate? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 2 noes.
So, the end debate is over. The matter is now before us on the package. Open the roll. Mr. LeBonde?
What about my amendment on breaking out D?
Your amendment was discussed. The council voted to end debate.
Yeah.
So, the matter is now part of the package to move forward with the change of date.
Does anybody object to it?
Janice Hahn seconded it.
There's no objection. It's a friendly amendment.
It was a...
It has to be voted on. Okay.
So, we're going to vote on the amendment?
There was an objection.
Was it? There was an amendment.
Send it to committee.
To break D out.
Did Ms. Hahn second the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody object?
Does anyone object to the amendment? Mr. Cardenas objects. Mr. Smith objected.
Requires a vote.
Okay, requires a vote.
Take D out without thinking they're approving something that's going to have an impact on the people we...
Mr. Parks, clarification?
Yes, we need to send the motion to committee.
Send the motion to committee?
Yes, so that they can look at the mitigation for the race and let the package go through.
But...
Does that, Mr., so we're going to take the vote now? We'll debate it later. So, what we have before us, Madam Clerk, on this vote is to separate the package. Correct?
Yes. Mr. LeBonde's motion, seconded by Councilmember Hahn, was to go ahead with the contract, except for the change of the event date portion of that contract.
So, a yes vote means that it will be separated out, a no vote means it will be together.
It's amendment, so they'll take the amendment first.
So, the amendment comes now? Open the roll.
Ask for a no vote. No vote on the amendment.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
2 ayes, 13 noes.
The matter fails. Now, the matter is before us for the package to move forward. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. The matter now passes. Matter is approved. Thank you. And forthwith on that? Thank you very much. Forthwith, Mr. Parks. The matter is now beyond, and we have other matters, and we haven't had public comment yet. Item 1? We haven't done general public comment. We'll do general public comment now. General public comment. General public comment. General public comment after general public comment, Mr. Alaka, because we've been holding general comment. We've been holding general comment. We're going to do that first. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excused shortly, so just while we're waiting for public comment to come forward, if I may, just make an announcement. A lot of people have asked about what the community is going to do regarding the recent train wreck, and I want people to know that are watching, people that are interested, that we're going to be putting together a memorial out there. We're going to take some time and work on that. We want to know who was out... We want to know who was out there and memorialize what they did. But there are a number of people in the community who wanted to do something. And tonight, Friday night at 6:45 at the Train Depot in Chatsworth, a number of girls, a couple of high school girls in our district have put together a candlelight vigil in memory of the 25 lives that were lost and prayers for those that are still injured. A young lady, Ame Haley, who's 15 years old, and Kristen, who's 17-year-old, are putting together a candlelight vigil. They've prepared all the candles. They've got the names of all the people who've lost their lives on the candles. And anyone that would like to come out, it's open to the public. There's no need to RSVP. There's no need to bring money, nothing like that. Just people in the Chatsworth community or people who have friends and loved ones on those... On that train are invited to the Chatsworth Train Depot. That's at the corner of Devinger, at the old Depot Road where the trains cross Devinger in Chatsworth, and we'd be pleased to have you join us. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a request from two colleagues that we have some commission appointments that have been waiting, number one and number 22, 23. Let's take those forward on the commissions, and we will hold public comment in respect to the commission appointments. Madam Clerk, will you bring them forward, please?
Item number one is a commission appointment of Reverend Louis Logan to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Item 22 is a commission appointment of Mr. Jorge E. Acevedo to Disabled Access Appeals Commission. Item number 23 is the appointment of Mr. Dexter Henderson to the Commission on Disability.
Mr. Alakan?
Members, the Neighborhood Education and Neighborhood Council Committee had the opportunity to vet Mr. Reverend Louis Logan's appointment to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Has a long track record of activism in the civil rights movement, particularly related to his work with the Baptist Church. He is a trained Baptist minister, and this is... I consider this to be more or less a reappointment in that Mr. Logan did serve on the BANC, the Board of Neighborhood Council Commissioners, for a period of time, and there was some confusion. He moved, and he was under the impression he still lived in the city of Los Angeles, but apparently had moved a couple of blocks outside of the city of Los Angeles. As a result, he was in a position to resign his commission post. He has now moved into Los Angeles and has been reappointed by Mayor Viera Regoso to the same position where he could continue his good work with the city of Los Angeles. The committee unanimously supported his reappointment, and obviously, I suggest that we all give Pastor... Excuse me, Reverend Louis Logan the opportunity to serve back on the BANC commission.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. Alakan, for that. Welcome back. Thank you. Tell us about... A little bit about you and why you want to stay on the commission.
Well, I appreciate very much the opportunity to be reappointed. Again, as has already been said, I'm Reverend Dr. Louis Logan. I'm the senior pastor of Bethel AME Church. And what kind of precipitated this entire situation is the fact that I was living in the Dons for several years, had been serving on the commission already, and had to move because the owner of the domicile wanted to sell. We couldn't agree on a sale price, so we had to kind of get out of there in haste. And my wife and I moved with our mother-in-law. Invariably, we just moved actually just on the other side of La Brea and thought that no problem, but then later we realized that we were outside of the city limits. Had to do what I had to do to move back. So we moved back into the city, and invariably, I understand we're in your district now. So that's, I guess, the tall and short of the particular issue with respect to our residential situation. So we're back. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the community. I think that the neighborhood council system is an awesome and unique matrix for engaging community residents in making an impact on their own communities and their livelihood and their circumstances. Gives stakeholders a tremendous opportunity to make an impact, and that's the kind of thing that I do. It's a part of what I feel ministry ought to be, both within and outside of the sacred walls of the congregation, and I have tried to do so for the last few years. Thank you.
Great. And Angela Reddick, you know, lives in that part of the district. Get close to her, and also go to the Westchester Neighborhood Council. Introduce yourself to them and let them know you live down the street there in Westchester.
Will do. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That matter is now before us. We could always annex that area. We could always annex that area if you want. Mr. Parks?
I just want to thank Dr. Logan for putting himself up for this committee. He's... Has a church in the eighth district, Bethel AME. And one thing, we always have to express our support in the fact that Dr. Logan, along with Minister Tony Muhammad, almost single-handedly, after Mr. Brown's death, the young man that was killed in a shooting with our police department, almost single-handedly stopped what would have been an uprising in the middle of Western Avenue where people came to express their concerns and their views, and some of them very agitated. And had not the pastor taken that crowd into his church and also gave them a very responsive role where they've been meeting now weekly, talking about community issues and community concerns, and moved all that energy into some very positive aspects to the community. We would have had a very tragic night that night, standing with him in the middle of Western Avenue. It was somewhat frightening to see the number of people, the anger that they came with, and some people outlined their disagreements with the city that were 20 and 30 years old. But yet, he was able to calm them down, take them inside, and not just for that one night, but found a method and a process to get them involved in a routine, positive action for the city. And I just want to acknowledge you for that and thank you, and it fits right into this whole neighborhood issue of bringing people together, talking with them, making sure that they are going to be organizers and leaders in their own communities. So I wanted to just say thank you publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. This matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your...
Okay, our next is number 22, and we have a public speaker on number 22, Mr. Sacks, on number 22. If that commissioner can please come forward on number 22. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, I've come before this city council, and I've become before the Disabled Access Commission, and I've come before Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, and I've also spoken at the county board of supervisors regarding the loopholes and access services and the program and the provision of service that they provide. And I also have a document for this gentleman that I'd like him to take a look at, but blowing the whistle, when the entities that put out these contracts state that you need to have X amount of vehicles, and the companies that receive the contracts have limited... Only limit the drivers. How do you expect to... People to be able to appeal the decisions regarding access service when the companies themselves are not living up to the provisions of the contracts that the cities or the agencies that grant the contracts give them? What is the standard for an appeal if the contracting companies don't live up to their end of the bargain? I have a document for the Sergeant Arms that I'd like to have the gentleman look at, and thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to rise and support Mr. Acevedo. I've known his family for many years through my children, going to school with their children. His brother Frank Acevedo's been a tremendous asset to the community, working in the Westlake Pico Union area. It's great to see the family coming together as a commissioner, and applaud you for your support of our city, and I thank you for all that you've done, and thank your parents for their constant support in working with us as well. Thank you so much, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you. Our colleagues urge your eye vote. I had a great talk yesterday with Mr. Acevedo. Someone who's committed knows a lot about the issues and really asked some insightful questions about how we move forward as a city to improve the city conditions for the disabled, and I think his wealth of experience can add tremendously to making the city of Los Angeles a better place to live for the disabled. Thank you so much, Mr. Acevedo. I enjoyed our talk, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations to you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have number 23 before us, and there's two public speaker cards on number 23, Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks will pass on number 23. We have Mr. Zuma Dog on number 23 on the commission appointment. Mr. Dog?
Yes. Yes, thank you. This is about the disabled, disability, and if you can hold my time...
No, we're not holding your time. Keep talking. Just keep talking, Mr. Dog.
All right. All right. So anyway, the disabled, the disability, I'd like to say that there's something Prop 1C. It's voter-approved taxpayer money that's supposed to go for the disabled for emergency shelter for women, battered women, and the disabled and elderly. And I'd like the commissioners and the city council to tell the commissioner, that money for the disabled is going for the Grand Avenue Cement Park. Okay? The highly subsidized Grand Avenue Park that the Arab Emirates Royal Family of Dubai, in a business arrangement with Los Angeles City Council, the CRA, and the county, is now going to be... They were able to apply for Prop 1C money supposed to go to disabled, and through a loophole, they have received it because, of course, the big developers get all the breaks, and now they're getting money for the disabled for this commercial park at Grand Avenue project. It's the biggest outrage I've ever seen, and so I hope that Los Angeles City Council can make priority number one for the new commissioner to make sure to try to do something to fight back for this emergency shelter money for the disabled and elderly that the voters voted for it for the disabled, for the elderly, not for a commercial cement park, highly subsidized, a Grand Avenue project. And so the... Yes, it's such an outrage. And let me move on to something else that is important for the disabled that I hope council can work with this commissioner on, and that is B. On the ballot November 4th, Prop B, affordable housing, that too will hurt the disabled because it will be competing for other housing. What the city council is putting before the voters is to change the law to allow affordable housing for elderly and disabled to expand to other causes, which will push the elderly, push the disabled out of the way. Vote no on Prop B. Zuma Dog, take back the city.
Our commissioners now before us. Mr. Labonge?
Right here. We'll do a great job, and Ms. Perry wanted to send her strong support for you as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I won't waste time. We couldn't find a better, more qualified individual to serve on this commission, so this is a no-brainer, and I would hope that you would get Dexter unanimous vote. Good man.
Thank you very much. That matter is now before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you for being here. We're now on to public comment. Ms. Sage on public comment.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Isis Sage. I'm representing Justice League for Benevolence.org. Today, first and foremost, I affectionately address the passengers of MetroLink Train 111, who tragically experienced the catastrophic and obviously senseless train crash on Friday, September 12, 2008. For some of these passengers, it's a horrific déjà vu. It is the second major MetroLink train crash heading towards the same part of town. This second devastating collision is within only a few years. We remember sadly the Glendale crash of January 26, 2005, to be exact. I say tragedies like the ones just mentioned should have never occurred. Let's not allow for it to happen again, especially in this day and age of sophisticated technology. NTBS, officials, listen to our plea and take action now. Train collisions should never be in vain nor taken for granted. We must demand accountability and demand for quality-safe, high-tech vehicles now. No more senseless injuries and deaths. No more death trains. Sincerely, I humbly wish to assure the passengers of Train 111 that many of us in the local and international community send you daily compassionate, heartfelt prayers. These prayers extend out to the medical staff, police officers, firemen, firewomen, and caring Samaritans for your caring and brave efforts. We thank you. We wish you well and send you loving moral support. We are comforted by your humanitarian service and dedication. Furthermore, for this... For those souls who have passed on, may your transition be guided and protected by divine angels, and may you find comfort in the sacred white light of divinity.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Althea Rayshaw. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It is frustrating waiting here four hours just to talk for a few minutes. It would be nice if the public comments could come first, just to hear what the public have to say. As you know, my nephew was murdered March 2nd by a legal alien gangbanger who was released from jail March 1st, and he killed him while his mom was in Iraq serving the country. Since then, after he killed him, he shot him in the stomach, shot him in the head. Then he went over to Culver City Park and was making out with his girlfriend when the Culver City Park came to the park because the park was closed. But since then, we supported Jamil's Law. Trying to get signatures has been very challenging. There was an incident at Lemurk Park where there was a raid. I've called Councilman Parks' office about that. Haven't heard anything. Also, the restrooms are locked at the park. We can't use the restrooms, and I just believe that it would be nice if we could use the restrooms when the park is open. It seemed like the restrooms would be open. Also, yesterday at Farmer's Market at the City Hall South Line, we were gathering signatures there. We were told that we could not gather signatures on the street, on the sidewalk. They called the police on us. They said it was Jam Perry's district, Susan Hutchinson. The police came, general services. I reminded them of what happened in Lemurk Park. Thank goodness for Officer Jackson. He did allow us to stay, but we had to stand away from the people on the sidewalk. The lady threatened that next Thursday, we can't come back. And it just seems like I spoke to the Los Angeles Police Department, said that we could gather signatures. If people can go to Jamil's Law, J-A-M-I-E-L-S-L-A-W.com, all we're trying to do is gather signatures so that illegal alien documented gangbangers can be deported out of the city of Los Angeles, and it would be nice if we didn't be harassed so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys, and then Zuma Dog here in council chambers.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Well, I read in the paper yesterday that our leisious chief and all that are going to flush down our cops down the toilet regarding that May Day. I don't know why you call it May Day. It should be payday because they know what they're doing. I don't want to say illegals or whatever. It could be the poor or whatever. But they know if they harass the police or something like that, they get pushed or something like that, they can turn around, file a lawsuit, and then they don't have to work anymore because the money that they're going to get on a class-action lawsuit is going to be outrageous. So if they're illegal, they get to go back home and live like kings and laugh all the way to the bank. It's just a known fact. I mean, we have units over in an area where the poor live and so forth, and we do our best to help them. And they even speak of it. They plan things like this if it can happen because they know what is going to go, that the city is going to pay them. There's just no doubt about it. And getting back to the police, like I said before, I had riot training. I've watched the news. I watched two, four, seven, nine, and I've seen every clip that, if you've seen it, and they did it right. And I'm sorry that you guys are flushing them down the toilet and then some are getting fired. I mean, why would they even do anything? I mean, it's like, if they do their job, they're going to get condemned. They're told to leave, you leave. That is the way it is. If the police tells you to leave, you leave. You see some people going, you don't come back and get in their face. And I'm telling you, it's just ridiculous that you turn around and you people bailed out too. It's just a known fact that why does anybody do anything? And I think you shouldn't even give a permit to turn around and have this May Day thing. It's just a known fact that something's going to happen and you know it's going to end up a lawsuit and the city is going to pay and that means we are going to pay. And we're in the middle classes getting tired of paying all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog and then Leganji Chase Siyame. Afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, City Council, City of Los Angeles. First of all, can you please talk to the mayor? Let the mayor know the people of Los Angeles do not want him flying to Texas this weekend to do fundraising for his campaign. The people have had enough. I say you're going to have a whole lot of people showing up at the airport. I'd love to see him pick them up and stick them in a trash dumpster and ship them on the other side of the city limits. Okay? We've had enough of this mayor and yeah.
Sir, I just have to remind you, any physical threats?
No, I said I would like to see that. Okay.
That's a very fine line, so just please.
Okay, yes. Yes, I want to be making sure I'm walking on the right side of that fine line. It was just a little thing there, but I'm telling you, we don't want this mayor spending only 11% of his time, especially when you're coming for more taxes and more bonds. And I say the people have had enough. And I also, something important, DWP. First, they raise your rates, then they give themselves raises. That's right. 6% raise for DWP right after they raised your rates. Okay? And I hope the city council had a chance to hear Councilmember Parks because he was on KABC radio this morning and he did a great job. You know, the guy up here, he's about as exciting as a gray confetti parade, but he sure was exciting this morning on Doug McIntyre. And you know, I got this shirt I'm wearing that says, "We love Parks." Couldn't it just be like, you know, I'd like to see Parks win county supervisor. I mean, do I have to love the guy? But I would like to see him win. That's why, I won't go any further than that. But he brings up a great point. Zuma Dog is here to say, I would like city council to look into an investigation of the SEIU because I heard that they have raised union dues and those raised dues went into Mark Ridley Thomas's Board of Super County Supervisors campaign, and that's something that is under your jurisdiction. This is under the jurisdiction because people have been asking for city council to look into the SEIU and the way they have raised, yes, I heard, they raised their union wages exorbitantly and that money is going to back Mark Ridley Thomas, burdened Parks for county supervisor.
Our next speaker is Leganji Chase Siyame. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. My name is Mr. Leganji Chase Siyame. I'd like to talk about ownership of property assets and health status. Ownership of private property should not be influenced or determined by the health status of an individual. Each and every American citizen has the rights to life, liberty, and property as is written in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. A person's health status should not be an impeding factor, especially if that property was acquired from personal financial resources. It should be argued in this manner, otherwise assets of such high value may become lost or stolen. For example, I am founder to businesses here in the United States, but I am currently precluded from owning them or running them. I am not a terminally ill patient, but I do have a few health concerns, just like everybody else. Taking this into consideration, it is important to realize that I am a co-founder to the architectural school called the Southern California Institute of Architecture, in short, CYARC. The solution that I propose is as follows. I would like to request the United States Congress to introduce a new policy which can secure personal property assets back into the hands of its rightful owners regardless of an owner's health status.
Mr. President, I don't believe he's said anything that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles yet. Just as a reminder, we have to be able to discuss, even if it's general public comment, things that are specifically under our jurisdiction that we have power directly over, okay?
It's very short. I'm almost done. Okay. These are owners that acquired these properties in question by just means and from their own personal financial resources. There are no--
I'm sorry, sir. I don't mean to interrupt again, but we do have to, I think it's off topic. The city attorney is correct. If you'd like to submit that, we'd be happy to take a look at it, but we just have to keep it under things, under our jurisdiction. Thank you. Appreciate your understanding. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that is Jennifer Jones.
Good morning again, good afternoon. I'm looking for a little clarification, Mr. President, about the rules for the council. Yesterday, you had several hearings regarding commissioners. One of them, all the commissioners had been heard in committee hearings. One of them was open for public comment. I put a card in for another different, based on the fact that they had been heard in committee hearings, I declined to put a card in until the commissioner for housing was brought it forward and had hearings, the hearings heard and public comment. I put a public comment in on it for a different commissioner and my name was not called. Please, when you explain, sir, the rules, could you hold my time? This directs the city attorney and Mr. President.
Let's see if we can get you an answer. Those other ones though, sir, you put a card in, we'd already had the hearing. At our discretion--
You had the hearings for all the commissioners--
Sir, excuse me, I'm giving you the answer. At our discretion, we can reopen on any of them. You've seen that happen before with a motion and there was a request to do that. So that's what the case was yesterday. You had cards in one that already had a public hearing. We make sure that there's a public hearing either in council or in committee. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything else on that?
Yeah, and as I remember correctly now regarding that item, I believe there are only one or two. There wasn't a quorum in the committee--
Right. In order to count as a public hearing in committee, you have to have a quorum. So if you fall short of a quorum, that automatically triggers. So the city clerk may have agendized it in that place without, because we have to put the agenda ahead of time before there, but if people don't show up, we do open that and that automatically triggers. Okay? That should provide an explanation exactly as to what you wanted to know.
But, sir, in that situation, and I appreciate the fact, I did not hear any call for reopening public comment for her hearing. So that's why I put a card in.
Right. It was, I was mistaken. It was a case in which there wasn't a quorum and that's why it automatically triggered. That didn't count as public hearing. The other ones already had had that with a quorum. So thank you for your comments. That will close the public comment for this time. Sorry, sir. That's the end of comments for now. Jennifer Jones is our next speaker.
Good afternoon. Your honor, your counsel, elected officials, my name is Jennifer J. Jones. We have resided in the city of Los Angeles since January 11th, 1967, whereupon my mother, a single mother, purchased a home at 821 West 68th Street. Since 2007, my mother died. I became the sole owner of the house. 2006, I had new neighbors that moved into the neighborhood and they began to, began all mechanical work. One morning before my mother's death, we both woke up with this smell coming into the house and my tongue swelled and my mother said she felt funny. So we took to the doctor, found there was some toxin levels in her body. We called building and safety, made a complaint. I have done that five numerous times and each time I called again just the other day and they said that it was unfounded. They could not see any mechanical work going on at this particular house at 828 West 68th Street. Well, they're at it again. They have never ceased nor stopped. My property is across the street from theirs and now my neighbors to the east of me directly has now decided to make low-riding cars where we hear these noise all day, all night. And I've called building and safety, I've called the police department, I've called everyone. I've called the department heads. I didn't know what else to do. So she said, "Take it to the city council. That's their job." I'm in District Parks area. I'm helpless here.
Okay. We'll see if we can't. I'll let Mr. Parks say a few words and I think he's going to get an assistant to help you right away. Mr. Parks?
We'll talk with her right now and get her information and we'll get that resolved with our field director. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in. We'll make sure we get that help to you right now. That closes our general public comment. If we can take up the next item called special. I'm sorry, before that, if we can reconsider number seven. Okay? Okay, all right. We don't need to reconsider. My apologies, Miss Rule. Next item called special, please.
Next item is item number two as well as 45, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
All right. And I think we are going to take that up with item 45, if we can take those up concurrently insofar as the state budget may affect any of that. I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask the staff to come, CAO, CLA, to come up at this time and because the financial status report, number one, does not have any major issues in it, I thought we could merge these two because what little information we have regarding the budget could eventually impact our next FSR. Ray, why don't you start off just giving us a thumbnail of what's in the FSR and then we'll ask both of you and the CLA to talk about the, what we know about the state budget.
Okay. I will quickly run through sort of the basics on the first FSR. This report primarily deals with a status report on where we finished last fiscal year and it gives a little bit of info on information on a go-forward basis of what we might be looking at in the coming year. As many of you know, we were short in revenue approximately 28.7 million below our estimate, revised estimate last year. This was a primary in the property tax accounts and our license permits and fees. There's been a lot of concern about property-related revenues and how that's going to affect our rent receipts on a go-forward basis. We were short about 22 million in our secured receipts last year. What drove this reduction in receipts was primarily due to what we saw or we find a drop in the collection rate. We had budget of approximately 96.4% last year and it looks like it was a little bit below that. Each 1%, just as a reference point, is approximately $9 million. We did receive approximately 11 million in July, which we feel there was some made-up receipts that we were expecting back in May. We had a similar situation a couple of years ago when there was several million dollars that the county held as they changed over their accounting system. And that amount actually made up later in the next fiscal year. There were some adjustments in documentary transfer account that we had some receipts that were below target, over approximately $8 million. In our economy-sensitive revenues, we're approximately up about 2% or so. And on a go-forward basis, we do believe we have budgeted appropriately in those accounts, these being our sales tax, business tax, hotel, and parking user tax. And as we look forward, certainly there's a lot of turmoil in the capital markets. We're looking at that information now. But as far as our actual receipts, we are certainly closely monitoring our property tax, documentary transfer tax, sales and so forth. And at this point, we feel we are in a good spot versus what we budgeted. And as we go forward, we'll be certainly tracking all those receipts very closely.
Ray, give us where we are on our reserve fund.
The reserve fund, we had budgeted approximately $191 million, $92 million. We did, because of the shortfall last year in the revenue, we were down, basically we were down to 181 million. Now, there are some recommendations to move 9 million to deal with the loans and some other adjustments. We actually, as we stand today, we're about 150.
So about 150?
With all the actions that are contained in this report.
Okay. And so the issues that, could you give us some idea in the sense of our revenues coming in? Are they going to be, in the past, we've had some untimely issues which caused us some cash flow issues. Does it look like our revenues will be coming in in a timely fashion?
At this point, we feel we're on solid footing. We certainly are closing, are tracking, closely tracking our revenue. We do, the receipts thus far, in the first couple of months of the year are on track and are big ones. That's property, you know, our sales tax, business, we are all on target at this point. We do have, as we go forward, we had a lot of one-time revenue that was put in. We're looking, working with departments to make sure that we get receipt of those revenues in the current year.
And then as far as, I know it's early in the fiscal year, but how are, in the sense of departments staying within budgets?
At this point, we do identify a couple big pots where we have concerns. Petroleum, as many of us experience at the pump. I think GSD right now is looking anywhere from 10 to 15 million dollars. We've seen a little bit of relief. We hope we continue to see that relief and that will affect our wholesale crisis. I believe we budgeted a little under $3 a gallon for this year, but unfortunately, thus far, we're well over $3, $3 as far as what we're actually paying. The other concern is in the liability claims account. There's been a number of attorney conflict panel cases that we've settled. There are a few other big ones that are potentially in the pipeline and so we're trying to monitor those and I believe we're reporting back to your committee next week with the status.
Okay. And then as far as the five-year projection, are we, with this current year, are we on schedule of what we projected? Is it reflect the structural deficit is moving upward or slowing down or just where are we on that?
In this report, for next year, we're looking at a deficit of approximately $280 million. There's certainly--
For this fiscal year?
Well, for this year, like I said, it's still very early. We don't know exactly where we'll end up. Depends on sort of the overall mix. We have some pots of money. If we're short in liability, certainly we'll have to make it up somewhere else and make adjustments.
But the 280 you're saying for the five--
The 280 is actually for 910. And certainly as we go forward, we'll be making recommendations on how to--
Have we begun to see any benefit on the management, managed hiring plan as we move forward since the committee or seeing any benefits of that?
It's still early in the fiscal year. As we go forward, we'll be tracking departments, their salary expenditures. Given the managed hiring, there should be a little bit of savings that will be generated. Certainly at this point in the fiscal year, it's early to tell.
Okay. Let me ask, CLA, do you have any comments on the current financial status report?
Lynn O'Zawa from the CLA's office. We're pleased with the property tax and sales tax revenues at this point in the year. However, it really is too early to be able to tell whether or not we're coming out of the difficult financial position that we're in. We really don't think so. So we would recommend proceeding with caution on any new expenditures and continue to do whatever we can to build the reserve fund.
And then, Ray, when do we have our FSR two coming out?
We are compiling that information now and we should be able to get that going. We should have it to your committee in the next couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. Colleagues, I'd like to recommend, we have two amending motions that are moving forward and everyone should have a copy, that we move a mini motion to A to address the issue of the Animal Services Department. Item 2B dealing with the issue addressing a pump issue over Greek theater that we sent at the committee. And that we verbally amend the committee report on item 11 in which that first sentence with the first print, the first comma, we strike that information regarding ITA and ad hoc committee member and replace it with a phrase comprised of the CAO, CLA, and mayors. And, but strike that current phrase at that new phrase. And those would be technical amendments for the FSR. Now, if we can move to the state budget and ask the CLA to give us what information they have at this time.
Good afternoon. We have word from Sacramento that there is a deal on the budget. Legislative leaders and the governor have agreed on two of the major holding points that the governor had with regard to the rainy day fund and the use of that fund. had with regard to the rainy day fund and the use of that fund, also with regard to the elimination of what has been referred to as the payday loan. In terms of how that one-point-six-million-dollar change will be addressed, it is our understanding that the penalties on underpayment by major corporations will increase by an additional ten percent. There's also a reduction in the reserve fund from one-point-two-billion to eight-hundred-and-thirty million dollars, and we also understand that there are potential line-item vetoes that the governor will impose to address this one-point-six-billion-dollar reduction. This is the additional ten percent withholding that was proposed by the legislature where all workers, state workers, city workers, every, all workers, income tax basically, would see a ten percent reduction in the first six months of their take-home pay. So that component has been eliminated from our understanding. We have not seen the bill language as of yet. The Senate is scheduled to meet at 4:00 p.m. today. The Assembly is scheduled to meet at 5:00 p.m. In the meantime, we will continue to review the trailer bills that are voluminous still. We are looking at the impact of that. There is still, at this time, no local borrowing. We understand that there is still, though, a hit to our CRA of about fifteen million dollars. The CRA is in the process of still reviewing that, and they will be reporting back separately in terms of the impact to their programs.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just ask, Mr. President, if we can continue item forty-five for additional updates on Tuesday, and also that we ask that the item two, that the committee report be approved as verbally amended and also amended by two A. Can we ask for an eye vote?
Okay, Mr. Labange.
Hi, thank you, each and every one of you. I have a B there on that issue there. My concern is what I read in the, was it the Controller's report, or whose report was it that came up with identified funds that were sitting there at the observatory?
This was the Controller's on it.
Right, yeah, okay, and I'm trying to get it organized, because I'm very concerned if, you know, the area north of the Greek Theater is above-ground system of a pump for fire protection. It's a temporary system. The motion I have is to ask you to look rather quickly at what its cost is and what it needs is, because sometimes it happens when we have a major project like that, we get to the end and we hook it up with some temporary aspect, but yet we don't have the money to that. I wanted to see if we could identify some money to improve permanently the fire protection system for the observatory for the Greek Theater Pump Station on Vermont Avenue. So I thank you, and if we could do it within the two days, we could also, could I ask that that be sent to my committee? I know we said, you said about the budget and finance, but go to my committee first to make sure, and then to budget and finance. Is that okay, Madam Clerk, on B?
That's up to the body instead of the clerk, but we can refer to both.
Up to the body.
You have to see, I should talk to Mr. Parks, too.
All those my friends on that side there, Mr. Zine, Mr. Weston.
You don't have one person against you over there.
They all agree. They ain't saying no.
Tell them to speak up. Mr. Parks?
No, we'd just like that to go to committee, and we'll get, resolve it very quickly, and that way we'll have it staffed by, embedded by CLA and CAO and bring it back.
So you want to go budget first?
Budget, yeah.
I'm okay with that, just as the CLA make note to make sure I know about it, because I want to fight for that.
The key is, we got to find out if there's revenue for that.
Okay, on forty-five, Mr. Zuma.
Hold on a second. I don't want to say there's revenue, Mr. Parks. I want to say if there's a one-point-nine out there that they failed to complete properly, I want to make sure that's identified for that. That happens at the end of a project. Thank you.
Zuma Dogg, we have to speak on this, and then Mr. Sacks.
Yes, I'll be commenting on item number two, which is the financial status report for the year two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
I'm sorry, I should specify, and we'll hold your time, it's for forty-five. I know we're taking them up concurrently, but, so if you can speak on number forty-five. It's the, that's the update on the state budget stuff. We took them up together. We're going to continue the forty-five aspect, but I thought I'd afford you the opportunity to talk. Don't worry, we'll credit you. Go ahead.
Okay, so yes, we're still talking about the financial status reports. We're starting about the budget of California, the state of California and the fiscal impact. Okay, I'm here to wish, issue a very grim alert for the state of California. First of all, as we have heard, we have the foreclosure problem, subprime, due to irresponsible and predatory things, and that is really going to hurt. We're going to see much more toppling like domino. We're not going to see the tax revenue expected. At the same time, we've had inflation through the whole year, and so all that, these businesses that have had these high costs of gas and fuel, well, once the reports come out at the end, you're going to see another tumble of Wall Street. And here's the real problem California's facing right now, with a very unfriendly business environment, and also very expensive to live with way too many property taxes, bond measures, and all these things. Here's the problem. I'll give a simple, homesy, moms-and-pop story. There's a coffee shop with an internet cafe that I blog at, and they're having a lot of problems because around them, about six, seven, I think it's up to twelve different businesses in the area have all closed. So now, not only don't they have the business of the employees who worked at the stores, the coffee shop no longer has the surrounding foot traffic of business as well of those other stores. So we're just seeing things are going to tumble. So I'm here to say, anything you can do to cut back all spending, and I think that the state of California elected officials are just like a bunch of spoiled teenagers with no control of their spending, and so I think we got very bad things, because you got people, you know, a lot of irresponsible, they never say no to a damn thing when it comes to spending. I'm here to say, you better put a lot more money for the National Guard, because we're going to have all hell breaks loose on the streets, because we don't have enough, we're not going to have enough money to provide basic state services based on their irresponsibility.
Thank you. On item number forty-five, Mr. Sacks, I think you have one minute. Yes, you did, but it, you turned around. Anything else you'd like to say?
What?
Anything else you'd like to say?
You said, you said, you said something else?
No, I said, is there anything else you'd like to say in those last ten seconds?
Yes, he said I could say something. Yes, I would just like to say that was fifteen minutes taken, and I wonder why my point wasn't made, but I'd just like to say that the state of California has a real problem, because we're not going to see the tax revenues. People aren't going to be able to pay their water and utility bills, and you rely on that money for services, and I'm just here to say, cut all the spending, and I still have much more time.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, one minute on item number forty-five, please.
I know, thank you. I appreciate the fact that you held that speaker's time while you explained to him your policy while I, when I was asking for clarification on my public time, you continued to let time roll. I do appreciate that fact, believe me. That's why I call you criminals when I come up here to speak. But I'd like to state also...
That would be a warning right now. We have a very clear policy. You're somebody who's very much pride yourself on being by the rules. That's in violation of the rules to get up here and say defamatory or disruptive comments. So please, if you talk about forty-five, which is about the state budget, you have one minute to discuss that.
Sir, I did preface my remarks by saying how much I appreciated the fact that you held the previous speaker's time, and you did not hold him while I was having my public comment and asking for a clarification. But anyway, regarding the state budget and the state legislation, we need to have some action taken so that this, this idiotic actions that take eighty, ninety days for a state budget while the public suffers needs to be clarified. And next week, a lot of fun.
Now, we'll close our public comments on this item. If there's no objection to continuing forty-five, that will be our action until Tuesday. On item two, if we can open the roll on the recommendation, or we'll just send it back to committee? I think that requires no vote. Or do you want, you want to pass the piece, but forty-five, you want some?
Two, item two with the amendment to A.
With the amendment.
And also the verbal amendment, but send to B to committee.
Okay, to B, without objection, we'll send back to A and the verbal amendment. We will accept as friendly amendments. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item called special, please.
Next item is item number six, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number six.
I see that. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is, today, what I'm asking us to do is, what am I asking us to do? Is to include in our city's two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight state legislative program, support for LAUSD's Small Schools Two Resolution, which will direct the LAUSD superintendent to report to the Board of Education with a plan of action to transform existing schools into small schools of five hundred or less. This is something, I believe, is an important mission for LAUSD. The studies have been done, the evidence is in, it's indisputable that kids do better on smaller learning campuses. I think the days of building mega campuses are over. I think the current large campuses just do everything to, you know, make it easy for kids to get disconnected. We know a lot of dropout rate happens between ninth grade and tenth grade. These kids get lost on a large campus, and we know that a lot of kids need smaller learning academies, a better connection with their teachers, a smaller area of interest that keeps them hooked into school when otherwise they would drop out. We know that smaller learning campuses allow for a higher graduation rate and higher parental involvement. They create safer environments. Again, large campuses have problems on a number of levels. We see violence breaking out on larger campuses, again, just because they're so big and they're so large that kids get disconnected. You know, a great example, Locke High School had the lowest graduation rate in the Unified School District. Twenty-three percent of the kids, twenty-three percent of the kids going to Locke High School graduated. That's a statistic we should all be ashamed of. Just a couple of weeks ago, Locke began to be run by the Green Dart Charter School. They're breaking Locke High School up into five smaller learning academies. That's a recipe for success. That's a recipe for less violence and more engaged involvement by the students at that school. So I just think it'd be great for us to go on record urging LAUSD to really take a look at this idea of smaller learning academies, don't build any more mega campuses, and take the existing large campuses and turn them into smaller learning academies. I think this is a win-win for everybody, and I hope you'll give your eyes support to this.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your leadership on this, Janice, because we should look at this and support the district. I also would just like to put a plug in, if we really could do something, to have schools start later in the day. But thank you on this. This is one small learning camp, and I'm very anxious to look forward to the success for the saints of Locke High School.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your work on this, Ms. Hahn, very much, and I know Mr. Weezer, myself, who've been testifying and involved in the small schools movement. It's one of the most important things we can do to assist LAUSD, so we appreciate that. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Next is item thirty-one, and there's a card on this item.
Okay, item thirty-one is next. We have Zuma Dogg on item thirty-one. Mr. Dogg passes. So we will open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item thirty-four, and there's a card on this item.
Okay, Mr. Dogg, item thirty-four. You have one minute left, sir?
Yes, if I could sneak you something off-topic, I too support five-hundred-size schools. That is the secret success of all schools.
I'm sorry, you can't, but go ahead, please.
Thank you. It's Friday, so the warnings, they wipe off, so thank you after Tuesday. So anyway, special event fees. What we're talking about here is taking massive amounts of money, federal, state, and local money, that is given to your government, elected officials, to disperse to the community to provide services. However, look around to the communities that need it most. The money is not making it to the communities, and every day, okay, look at this, okay, today we got sixty-five thousand dollars for a parade, three thousand dollars for this party, eleven thousand dollars for this music festival, four thousand dollars for this fair. It's always something good. Hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the general fund, not going to schools, not going to libraries, not going for services, not going for anything, except for the special event things that are usually, I say that you are out of your jurisdiction and authority in what you are using them for here. And the final thing, if I could...
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Sir. All right, we'll close our comments on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. We had Mr. Dogg on item thirty-five, but he's reached that limit. If we can take up thirty-five and forty, and also forty-two. Please prepare the roll on those three, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number forty-one, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Sea Otter Awareness Week. Ms. Hahn.
I'm trying to do this with a straight face. Colleagues, this is a resolution declaring that from this day forward, the last week in September is the Sea Otter Awareness Week. What is Sea Otter Awareness Week, you might be asking? This is a week that will be dedicated to an awareness of what sea otters mean to our environment. Sea otters play a critical role in the marine ecosystem as a keystone species by promoting healthy kelp forest, which in turn supports thousands of organisms. Loss of habitat and nutrients provided by kelp forest leads to profound cascade effects on the marine ecosystem. The survival of the sea otter in California remains dependent upon continued public support and increased understanding of the essential role sea otters play in nature. So we must do all we can to protect our coastal ecosystem and foster the survival of sentinel species such as the sea otter. So Sea Otter Awareness Week brings awareness to the issues of sea otters and how important they are. So you'll be glad to know that thirty-one cities and our, and the County Board of Supervisors have already agreed to proclaim Sea Otter Awareness Week. So we're joining in support of others who recognize that we need to support this week, and I wanted to say locally, you can celebrate Sea Otter Awareness Week with the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium, September twenty-first to the twenty-seventh. You can visit the aquarium's kelp room in the exhibit hall to learn more about sea otters and help kelp forests in Southern California. The Exploration Center will have sea otter-themed hands-on activities in the mini classroom. So colleagues, this is when I love my district, something that only I am able to bring forward, Sea Otter Awareness Week, and I hope you'll join me in declaring that we honor this every year.
Thank you. Well, as the city attorney pointed out, and I'd like to share with the whole council, I think the council otter vote, yes, on this item.
Oh.
All right, with that, let's open the roll. Blame Dion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
That was funny. Ten eyes.
Thank you.
We are even more aware than we were earlier today. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to leave at ten-thirty a.m. on October twenty-fourth for city business. This meets policies.
She's excused.
And that clears the desk.
All right, do we have any announcements, business nature, committees, anything? Not? Do we have any adjourning motions? If we can send forty-seven and forty-eight forthwith, please, without objection. Do we have adjourning motions today? Yes, okay, we'll start with Ms. Grule, then Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Parks. Ms. Grule.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you adjourn in memory of Dwight Chapman. He passed away on September twelfth, two thousand and eight, from heart failure at the age of fifty-five. He was born in nineteen fifty-three in Cleveland, Ohio, to Pauline Anderson Chapman and Ellison Chapman. His family moved to California in nineteen sixty-three, and in nineteen sixty-four, they moved to the valley in Mission Hills, California, where his brother Marion still resides. Dwight had five brothers and two sisters, and his sister Marion works for the Bureau of Street Services. He went to neighborhood schools, O'Melveney Elementary, San Fernando Junior High, and San Fernando High School. He graduated from Aviary College, and in nineteen seventy-six, became a health teacher at San Fernando High School, as well as a coach there. He was well-liked by his students, and some of his students work for the city today. They remember him as a strong leader and their mentor. Dwight has one daughter, January, who shared a love for photography with her... Dwight has one daughter, January, who shared a love for photography with her father. Dwight always took a lot of pictures and liked to travel and play football as well as coach. He did not believe in any particular church, but always considered himself a Christian. And the viewing was held yesterday, and services were held this morning at the Greater Community Church in Pacoima. I ask that we adjourn in memory and survived by his daughter, siblings Derek, Danford, and Marion, and father Ellison, and stepmother Veronica. He will really be missed by all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Louis Shilt, Shilts, who was a lifelong resident of Los Angeles and was born on August 11, 1925. She passed away on September 8, 2008, in Igerock. She was 83 years old. She was in the, she was in the very active Igerock community for many years. She was a faithful member of the Igerock Presbyterian Church where she sang in the choir. She was also a beloved member of the 20th Century Women's Club where she served as an officer and chaired the annual holiday boutique for several years. Louis was known as a great listener, a persuasive speaker, and a loving friend who was good at telling the truth, even if it wasn't the easy thing to do. She was a world traveler, always on the go, setting off on a new journey with her travel partner, Doris. Louis loved to talk to friends and family about her many trips. She was a skilled seamstress who outfitted each of her children with tan-sewn clothing throughout their early years. She was also known for her pomegranate jam, which she would make once a year at Christmas for her family. Louis had a strong, dependable character and was always quick to find a reason to smile. She was a very special woman who bravely fought cancer for months, never losing her positive attitude and bright, loving spirit. And councilmembers, I also ask that we adjourn in the memory of Robert Frank Saunders. The Elserino community, particularly the parents, students, and administrators at Farmdale Elementary, lost a very dear friend last week when Robert Frank Saunders passed away at the age of 59 after complications following knee surgery. Mr. Saunders became a Farmdale ambassador and a daily fixture on the campus when his youngest grandson began pre-kindergarten there. He was known affectionately as Grandpa Saunders. He began attending parent committee meetings and quickly became a genuine leader at Farmdale and in local District 5. He is particularly known and recognized for the work he did to bring to the local school there that sits, there's a, a, a old piece of land that was filled with dirt where teachers and parents from Farmdale would park, and it sits next to a park. And for many years, people would go there even on rainy days and, and get mud on themselves. And not to mention, on very windy days, all that dust would blow up to the local school and give kids problems with their asthma. And Mr. Saunders took it upon himself to make sure we paved that parking lot. He first approached me when I was on the school board, and I said I would love to help him, but that it's under the jurisdiction of the city. Two years later, I actually get elected to the city council, and with his advocacy and work and perseverance, his charisma, really, we were able to allocate funding, and that parking lot was paved this past May of 2008. Yesterday, Farmdale Elementary dedicated the Parents' Center in his honor. I attended the event and was very moved by the outpouring of emotion and the tremendous respect that so many people had for this great man. He will be missed. Mr. Saunders is survived by his wife of 47 years, Olivia Duarte Saunders, three children, and five grandchildren. And I certainly will miss him. He was truly a person who inspired me to do more in the Elserino community, just a wonderful person, a person when you see them, you know they're special, that they care about the community, and are always out there willing to lend a hand. Mr. Saunders will certainly be missed by the Elserino community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
Nice tribute, and it's wonderful to know that there's people out in our city every day like Mr. Sanders and others. On behalf of Mr. Zine, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Elmer Dills, who was a longtime radio and television extraordinaire, featured on his show for music, for food, and for fine dining. Elmer Dills lived in Pasadena. He survived by his wife Lynn and four children. He was much-loved. He had a previous career, which I didn't know, with the Central Intelligence Agency, where he served for 20 years. Elmer Dills, 82 years old.
All members on that. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of musical genius Norman Whitfield, who passed away Tuesday, September the 16th. He's a native of Harlem, New York. He moved to Detroit when his family moved there to seek employment. At 19, he began to hang around the Motown-Hittsville, L.A., USA office, and as that label grew, he was recognized by Mr. Gardi, who gave him a job in the Quality Control Department, which determined which songs would or would not be released by the label. He eventually joined them as an in-house songwriter, where he was involved with several major hits, including Marvin Gaye's Pride and Joy, The Marvelettes' Too Many Fish to Fry. He then became the recording label's producer. His big break came when Smokey Robinson turned that job over to him as far as the temptation, his primary producer, where one of his big hits was Ain't Too Proud to Beg. And he's a two-time Grammy Award winner, a prolific songwriter and producer, and he infused many of the traditional soul music, rock, and psychedelic labels in the Marvin Gaye Temptations and others. He has a tremendous legacy in the Motown area. The other person is Linda Denise Scott O'Neill. She, I'd ask that we adjourn in her memory. She passed away on Monday, September the 8th. She's a resident of Torrance. She died at the USC Norris Cancer Hospital in Los Angeles. She joins her husband, Dr. Richard Neal, who passed away in August of 1995. Linda was born in New York City in 1951. She's raised by her parents. They moved to Southern California, where she began to look towards attending college and also secured many modeling contracts. She also began to look at businesses where she began, she began her career in travel by handling the executive travel agent for Pan Am Airlines. She then began to a career in internal interior design and decorating. She later went into business where she worked as the restaurant regional manager for Roberts American Gourmet, where they introduced to California and western states healthy snacks and other products. She basically moved to a variety of entertainment and professional circus. She can be summarized as a person that knew how to live. She leaves her brother, Harold Irving, in Pennsylvania, her sisters Sandy and Sharon in Los Angeles, California, and a host of relatives throughout the United States. She is going to be buried on September the 28th, 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Modina Hayes, who passed away this past Tuesday. She was a guiding light to her family and a trusted and compassionate friend. She was the mother of Cynthia Harnish, president and CEO of Inner City Arts, a longstanding organization located here in downtown Los Angeles, and I think Mr. Weezer may want to second this. Inner City Arts offers opportunities for kids to build artistic self-expression and enhances their ability to perform both creatively and academically. She is survived by a host of family members and friends, and the services were held in her hometown in South Carolina. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Shandy Winstead. Mr. Winstead retired from this life on Monday, September the 15th, at the tender age of 32. He spent his life doing what he loved, writing music. By doing this, he had hopes that he could share his life experience and dreams in order to help his family accomplish their own dreams. He was a remarkable young man whose tremendous loyalty, passion, and love helped shape the lives of countless individuals. He was a beloved hero to his family and also a deeply compassionate person. He is survived by his wife, Odia Dawkins, daughter Brielle Winstead, as well as his mother, two sisters, and a host of other family and friends. And the funeral service will be held on Saturday, September the 27th, at 11:30 a.m. at Inglewood Park Mortuary.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Quick reminder that if you're free this Saturday, tomorrow from noon to 5:00 at Woodley Park in Van Nuys, it's the Deaf Awareness Month Festival, so come on down if you're free. And with that, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll. And we will next be in session on Tuesday, the 23rd. We will be in recess on the 24th, the 26th, and then also the following Tuesday, the 30th. That's for the League of, California League of Cities meeting and Rosh Hashanah. But we will next be in session this Tuesday, the 23rd. Have a great afternoon and a great weekend. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned.